I'd like to call our March 14th, 2019 Commission Meeting into session. This time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Steve Irvin to come forward, who will lead our prayer, and he will also lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance and the pledge to our Tennessee flag. Commissioner, you're recognized.
Dear heavenly gracious Father, we ask that you watch over this meeting tonight. Let our decisions honor you and the people of this great community. Bless the leadership and attendance here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation on the ground, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three white stars on a field of blue. God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
We have twenty present.
Record, roll.
We have twenty present. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have a quorum. I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tem Jeff Phillips for the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Kethren. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them to be in order, and I move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all of those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Mayor Kethren?
Yes, sir. You're recognized.
One quick announcement. Most of you may have seen in the news journal this morning that a former Commissioner Lyndal Vaughn passed away. I think he represented the 2nd District, if I'm not mistaken, and I just wanted to mention that to everyone. I think his term was somewhere around the year 2000, if I'm not mistaken, and I just wanted to pass that information along to everyone.
Will you take just a moment, Commissioner? If everybody please stand. Just give, let's take a moment of silence for him. Commissioner?
And on a much brighter note, Commissioner Virgil Gammun is celebrating his 29th birthday today.
So, do you have a sombrero? And we'll put it on him and start singing "Happy Birthday." Happy birthday, Commissioner. Sorry you have to be with us on your, on a happy birthday night, but we're glad you're Public comments. Now it's time for our public comments. We have three people signed up to speak. We ask that you come forward, give your name, address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. First, we have Mr. Jimmy Sher, Mr. Jimmy Sher. Mr. Sher, you're recognized.
My name is Jimmy Sher. I live at 5417 Hoover Road in Last Casses. Mr. Mayor and Honorable Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Jimmy Sher. My wife and I, Terry, own Medstat Ambulance. I'm here to talk to you and question why Rutherford County EMS started competing with local businesses for non-emergency patient transports. According to a short Google search, Rutherford County EMS response time is right on the national average of eight minutes, even though the number of calls has almost doubled since 2006. Rutherford County EMS is funded through around 2.5% of the collected property tax. 2.5% is a very small percentage to fund a service that brings potentially life-saving resources to the scene of a person in desperate need of medical help. Rutherford County EMS has shown the ability to keep up with growth while maintaining an excellent staff and response time. I'm here tonight to voice a concern that Rutherford County EMS is being distracted by the perceived glint of gold at the end of the rainbow. Over the past two years, I've learned some very hard lessons about the convalescent ambulance business. There are facilities that need patients transported to another location and patients that need transportation to a physician's office. Unfortunately, there are many wickets to pass through in the insurance world to get paid for non-emergency ambulance transport. Insurance companies and government agencies like to make it as difficult as possible to get reimbursed for transporting a patient without lights flashing and sirens blaring. There are many ancillary expenses: wages, automobile and liability insurance, fuel, federal taxes, and equipment and maintenance. The state of Tennessee requires ambulances, all ambulances, to carry the same equipment. There is no distinction between emergency and non-emergency, only advanced life support and basic life support. Non-emergent transports can be either ALS or BLS, which, in order to be competitive, you must have both. Which brings me to the crux of my questioning. Why is Rutherford County EMS in the non-emergent transport business when their focus is 911 emergency calls? If you or your loved one is laying on the side of the road in need of emergency medical attention, would you be happy to know the county is choosing to divert its attention from providing you faster response, better-trained personnel, and instead trying to compete with established local businesses in non-emergency transportation? What is the projected revenue versus the actual revenue? What is the operating margin? Has anyone looked at the additional liability exposure using inexperienced personnel to transport patients? How about the exposure to Medicare audits and possible Medicare fraud charges? Anderson County EMS recently commissioned a comprehensive study of their operation to identify modifications to operate more efficiently and economically, and improve performance and quality while improving use of taxpayer money. They identified two realities. Reality one, an EMS service can provide good service, fast service, but not all three at the same time. So I know my time is running out, so I want to jump. The 2019 Rutherford County budget talks about the need to increase EMS salaries because of turnover in the ambulance department. How can you justify adding extra non-emergency personnel if you're having trouble, problems finding and retaining emergency personnel? Has there been an internal financial analysis performed to verify the expected profitability of this new service?
Mr. Sher.
As a Rutherford County taxpayer, when can we expect to see the results of such an analysis?
Mr. Sher, thank you for your comments tonight, and it sounds like you have more you want to say, so you're welcome to come back and talk with members on the Public Safety Committee. But thank you for your comments tonight. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Aaron Holliday. Mr. Holliday, you're recognized.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Mayor, my name is Aaron Holliday. I live at 2034 Abingdon Drive in Laverne, Tennessee, and I approached the Commission this evening in support of two agenda items. I speak as a 15-year resident of Rutherford County, a 15-year homeschool parent, an 11-year member of the Rutherford County Republican Party, a 10-year friend of Mr. Wayne Blair, and an eight-year former member of the Rutherford County School Board. Today, I continue to serve as an appointee to the Laverne Planning Commission. Mr. Wayne Blair is absolutely impeccable in every criteria of evaluation for the office of County Commissioner. I pray you will support his appointment for the benefit of the 10th District, the citizens of Laverne and Smyrna, and all citizens of Rutherford County. I've been so impressed this evening with the gathering of friends and colleagues that have come to support Mr. Blair this evening. You may not realize, but people from far outside of our county, who know Wayne from his work in the Tennessee School Boards Association, as well as his career, have come in support of Mr. Blair for this prestigious opportunity. I trust that you will find him worthy of that appointment. Secondly, I speak in support of the resolution recommended to your agenda by the Steering Committee and authored by the Rutherford County School Board. This important resolution has already been adopted by the Murphysboro City School Board, and discussion in the Steering Committee asked the question, why does this county, why does the, why does the county commission need to weigh in on a matter that seems to, seems specific to schools? Put simply, it is because our legislators are not listening. Year after year after year, Rutherford County schools are recognized as one of the top school systems in the state, providing opportunities for, of school choice through the International Bacolart Program, Mechatronics Training, the Collegiate Academy Partnership with MTSU, the Dual Enrollment Partnership with Motlow, Fine Arts emphasis across the county, ACT Prep, and the nationally-ranked performance of Central Magnet School. Our schools are excellent, and to not take action on this voucher resolution is either an insult to our school system or an injustice to all citizens of the, of Rutherford County. An insult to our school system because we educate at over $1,000 less than the state average, and so the reward for being an excellent school system with a tight budget, which you applaud over and over, is that you allow the state legislature to pass something that will inevitably strip dollars away from the public education system. An injustice because Williamson County, in a March 6 article in The Tennessean, will be exempted from this legislation because their legislators will make a different set of rules for Williamson County than for the rest of the state. We've seen in the media this week the injustice of one set of rules for the affluent and a different set of rules for everyone else. School choice is available in Rutherford County, and vouchers are not the answer. Terry Hodge says over and over from his board seat, what will be done with the students that are left behind?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Mr. Wes Wigle. Mr. Wigle, you're recognized.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Wes Wigle. My family owns a farm in Rockvale. Address is 9665 Rockvale Road. Our property borders the proposed convenience site in the Rockvale area. I'd first like to touch on the character and use of the surrounding property. This is in the town center of Rockvale, so it's almost in comparison to putting a convenience center in the middle of a town. The convenience center that's currently there located took part at a time when our county was in a much different place in growth and county value, and I don't think it came about as a product of thorough planning. I think it came about as a matter of convenience, if you pardon the pun. We've got an opportunity to look at the citizenry in this area, the use of the property that's contiguous to this proposed site, and think about, is this really the best place to put a solid waste transfer station? Because ultimately, that's what it is. We can call it a convenience center if we want to, but there's processing of solid waste on the site. Physical safety, I know there's been some concerns raised to the current convenience center, and there's only one car allowed in and out because of an accident that's taken place on another county facility. The proposed site, as it is now, with the consideration of the store on the site being given to the historical society, isn't going to be much bigger than the site that's on the other side of the road. We're going to run into the same issues, only we're compounded here. If you go out on that site and you look at the visibility, when you're traveling down Rockvale Road, you can't see this lot. You can't, you can't see the corner. You can't see around, and so you've got elderly, you've got children, you've got big trucks coming in and out right there. We're not improving the safety in the situation there. I know it's the property that the county has, and they're trying to make the best use of it. In my opinion, I think from a standpoint of overall use, if you look at the contiguous properties, there's got to be a more suitable location for a solid waste processing center. I'll end with some comments on environmental contamination. I'm a real estate attorney. I practice a lot in environmental law. I've dealt with contamination, liabilities associated with remediation. There's clearly established scientific data that shows that statistical illuminates the type of extent, nature of contaminants that come from household data, because let's face it, people don't throw away what they're supposed to throw away. People change their oil, put oil in bags, and they put it in the crusher. They put any number of chemicals. Those chemicals end up in the ground, the water, the air, and they affect contiguous properties. I've commissioned a baseline environmental study with BDY Environmental to give me air, soil, and quality readings, and I'm going to use this study as a baseline should this proceed forward, and we can update that study statistically as we move forward to show a link between the use of the property as a convenience center and the contamination of the contiguous areas. I think, given the location of this area, not only with residential, historical now, but agricultural properties, I'll finish in one second. We also have the Snellshell Cave Complex, which lies under this area, and it's been described as one of the most biologically significant cave sites in the southeastern United States. These contaminants are going to end up in the groundwater. They're going to end up through the surface water. They're going to contaminate neighboring properties. There's an issue here, and I don't know based on what the proposed use is, but I'm really curious, does this raise a Jackson Law issue? I don't know. I can't answer that, because I don't know what the proposed use is. But I'll leave you with this question. Will this proposal result in the destruction, the loss, the damage of any feature determined by this board to be of significant natural scenic or historical importance? I think it will, and I think if you go out there and you look at the site, and you look at the fact that this is the town center of the Rockvale community, putting a convenience center there, I don't believe meets with the character of the property. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wigle. Appreciate your comments tonight before the Commission. Next on the agenda is our elections confirmations. I call on our Steering Vice Chair, Commissioner Craig Harris. Commissioner Harris, you are recognized, sir.
Commissioners, you'll see a list of notaries on your iPad. I make a motion for their approval.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all of those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Fill vacancies, 10th District Commissioner.
Commission needs to fill a vacancy for District 10, County Commissioner. Steering Committee recommends Wayne Blair. I make a motion for his approval.
Have a motion and a second. Have a motion on Mr. Blair. Let me, let me ask if there are any other nominations from the Commissioners to come Seeing none, have a motion and a second to elect Mr. Wayne Blair to the 10th District. County Commission seat. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Roll call. Call, roll. Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Gammun.
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy.
Yes.
Commissioner Rather.
Yes.
Commissioner P.
Yes.
Commissioner Cook.
Yes.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Kush.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gammun.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd.
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin.
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch.
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano. We have a vote with 20 yes.
I'd like to announce that Mr. Wayne Blair has been selected as our newest Commissioner. Congratulations, Mr. Blair.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move that we suspend the rolls since it's not on the agenda and allow Mr. Blair to be sworn in now.
Have a motion and a second for Mr. Blair. Mr. Blair, if you would, I'd like for you to come up, and I'll come down from the podium, bring you and the Blair clan, whoever that might be, and if you will, come on up, and I'll come down and I'll get you sworn in. Members, we need a motion to suspend a rule for us to do this. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
So, Wayne's son, Mr. Zach Blair, Zach was actually, I had him for a serving here at the State Senate, now works as a salesman in the void for the State of Tennessee, partnering in a few searches. Not asking. So, Wayne, we're definitely glad to have you here. So, if there's one time to put your hand on the Bible and repeat that, I'm going to go slow. So, aye, Commissioner?
Aye, Wayne Blair.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
And I'll execute.
The duties of the County Commissioner.
The duties of the County Commissioner.
And the 10th District.
And the 10th District.
Of Rutherford County, Tennessee.
Of Rutherford County, Tennessee.
To which I have been.
To which I have been.
Elected.
Elected.
And to which I am about to assume.
And to which I am about to assume.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Partiality.
Partiality.
Or favor to the best.
Or favor to the best.
Of my skill and ability.
Of my skill and ability.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
And the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This 14th day of March, 2019, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I might, I might be remiss if, since we have the person who Mr. Blair is replacing as one of our own, and he's gone on to the state of Tennessee. Commissioner, welcome back. I know that we have somebody that's going to take your shoes and take care of them well.
Yes.
But we're very proud of you representing us. That's why I kept you up here.
Thank you.
It's all yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And Commissioner, it is good to be back. Thank you for all of your support in the past, and I just wanted to advocate, even though he doesn't need it, that there's, there's people that serve, and then there's Wayne Blair, and that's where I put this man. And I know it embarrasses him, but to know that someone of his quality is going to be supporting and, and representing the folks of our district, there's nobody that I would want to represent me more than Wayne Blair, and I'm privileged to call him friend. You are going to be privileged to be able to serve with him in this role, and it's just going to be a wonderful experience for those that don't know him, to get to know him. I'm honored that he thinks enough of our district to allow his name to be submitted, and Wayne, I pray for you. I'm honored that I'm your friend, and I'm grateful that, that you've done so much for this county already, that you're going to do even bigger things, and I just can't say enough, both publicly and privately, about Wayne. He's a wonderful man of God. He's a good friend, and he wants to provide solutions to the, to the county that he's called home for years, and since he was born, and that's who he is, and so I'm humbled to have been able to sit in that seat, but you're going to be doing a lot better with Wayne Blair in that seat, too, representing the 10th District. So I want to say congratulations and thank you, Wayne, for your friendship and for your service. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate you letting me do that. Thanks, sir.
So, Commissioner, you're chair awaits you. I've already got your name on the board, so congratulations. Okay, next on the agenda, members, is item number three, fill the vacancy on Industrial Development Board, Health Education Facilities Board, to replace Mr. Rob Lyons' term to expire August 20 of '23.
Commissioners, we need to fill a vacancy on the Industrial Board and Health Education. The Steering Committee recommends Larry Sims. A move for his approval.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next, item number four is to announce the Commissioner vacancy on the Agriculture Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Steve Piercy, term to expire December 2019. Commissioner Gurley, you're recognized.
Yes, I would just like to extend an invitation to my fellow Commissioner of the 10th District that if he ever wants to haul hay with me again, he's welcome to come over, if I ever bail hay again. I think that's kind of a mute issue, but he knows what I'm talking about.
Well said. Now we have a resolution to approve the consent agenda. I call on Chairman Pro Tem Jeff Phillips. We have a motion.
Thank you, Mayor Kethren. I've also reviewed the consent agenda. I find all those items appropriate, and barring any suggestion about removing any one of those items from a Commissioner, I move that the consent agenda be adopted.
I have a motion. Is there a second? And a second. Any questions? Without objection, all of those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Machine vote. We're on the board. Excuse me. Everybody place or place or vote on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment, just before we head into our, we've got two minutes before we go into our public hearing. Mr. Clarity, we'd like to recognize you, if you don't mind standing. I believe this will be your last term, serving our, a great county, and all the years of service that you've given to Rutherford County schools, we certainly appreciate that. I'm sure that the school board is not looking forward to losing you, but I think you've trained somebody very well, so I'd like to say congratulations and Godspeed in, in your retirement. I hope you'll enjoy whatever, whichever direction the winds may take you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations. We have about one minute before we get into our public hearing. We can go ahead and any unfinished business at this time. Seeing none. Okay, it's 6:30, and now it's time for our public hearing. I'll call on our County Planning Director, Mr. Doug Demossi. Mr. Demossi?
Thank you, Mayor Kethren, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the Commission. We have two public hearings for you tonight. The first is a rezoning request for property located along New Salem Highway, Highway 99. The applicant's requesting to rezone this property to commercial services. There's two pieces of property involved with this. They are listed as 2328 and 2348 New Salem Highway. Just as for historical background, property adjacent to this was rezoned commercial services, the same zoning under request tonight by the Board of Commissioners back in January of this year. Information provided by the applicant states the owners would like to facilitate neighborhood supporting retail by repurposing the existing structures or by developing new attractive retail buildings. The intent is to enhance the neighborhood by offering low-impact services while being extremely sensitive to the quality of life of the nearby residents. They also list some examples of appropriate services, such as hair salons, dental They also list some examples of appropriate services, such as hair salons, dental offices, et cetera. They also list some excluded uses that they're not interested in providing. Uh, I did explain to the Planning Commission at, during their meeting, that if it's an allowed use under the zoning they're requesting, it's all well and good if the current owners don't wanna do that, that's fine. But if we were to see an application for an approved use in our zoning ordinance, even if it says that's not one he would like to do, we wouldn't have much choice. We'd still have to consider it. So that's just something I wanted to bring to your attention. Uh, the concept plan for both of these lots have been submitted. Appears to be the same design roughly on both lots. Again, this is conceptual. This is not something that they're locked into. Just kinda gives you an idea of what they're proposing to do with the property. Uh, any uses, again, just to reiterate, anything that's classified as a general retail trade are allowed by right in a commercial services zone, which they're asking for. So again, staff nor the Planning Commission could deny a site plan if one of those uses that they want to exclude were to be submitted for our approval. Properties have access to New Salem Road. Uh, this is a state highway, so TDOT approval would be required for any new or revised entrances to the property. Landscaping would have to be provided consistent with the zoning ordinance as well, as far as landscape screening and those kind of things are concerned. Uh, of course, if this application is approved, all that would be verified during the site plan review process. This zoning is consistent with the recommendations made by the, the county's comprehensive plan, and commercial zoning is located directly across the street within the city of Murfreesboro and immediately to the west of the subject properties. Again, those properties that were rezoned back in January. Uh, the Planning Commission had a little bit of discussion about this. Uh, there were a couple people that did speak, had some concerns about the application. Most of the discussion centered around the requested zoning for the property, staff's concern about assembling the property versus a piecemeal approach to the zoning. Uh, staff, myself, had reiterated some concerns at the Planning Commission regarding, uh, more of a piecemeal approach. We've seen two properties a couple months ago, two more. Uh, but there was discussion about, you know, that's staff's preference would be to have them all come in at one time, but if the owners aren't willing, then there's not a whole lot we can do about that. So that was the, really, the, the main part of that concern. But after discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the request by a unanimous vote. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the Commissioners, from Mr. Demossi? Seeing none, I call the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this, on this request. Public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue, please come forward, state your name and address, whether you are for or against the proposed request. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed, and the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Do I have a motion? Have a motion? And a second? And a second? Any questions or discussion? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mayor Ketchum, thank you. We just have one other public hearing tonight. This is on changes to the stormwater ordinance for consistency with the adopted building code. Uh, the building code has, was recently adopted to the 2018 series of codes. As part of that, Ms. Bell, our codes director, will also be presenting, I believe at next month's meeting, some, uh, changes of wording to the, regarding the, uh, the duties of the County Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Uh, when it comes to the stormwater ordinance, right now, the body for appeals to anything in that ordinance is the Board of Zoning Appeals. That really isn't the appropriate board for that body, simply because the Board of Zoning Appeals duties are spelled out pretty specifically within state law, and this really doesn't fall into that. So all we're doing here is proposing to change any mention of the County Board of Zoning Appeals in Chapter 10 of the Stormwater Ordinance to the County Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Everything else about the ordinance stays the same. It just changes the body that they would have any appeals to. And quite frankly, I was talking to, uh, our engineer, Mr. Mike Hughes, prior to the meeting. Uh, I don't think we've ever had an appeal to that ordinance, so, uh, don't anticipate any, but this is, this will make it a, a cleaner situation. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Demossi, from the Commissioners? Seeing none, I call the County Commission Board of Commissioners meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request for stormwater ordinance. Public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue, please come forward, state your name and address, whether you are in favor of or opposed to this request. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed, and the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Do I have a motion on this? Motion to approve and a second? Any questions? Any discussion? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Demossi. Now it's time for reports by standing committees, and I call on Chairman Robert P. for the Budget Committee report. Budget Finance Investment Committee? Recognize. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have way too much paraphernalia, uh, these days that we lug around. Well, the first order of business is a resolution, uh, excuse me, from the Recovery Court, and this is item K1A, and I'll start at the top there, Recovery Court. Uh, other supplies, increasing expenditures, other supplies and materials, $6,005. Uh, data processing server, $2,840. Data processing equipment, $5,775. Other charges, $10,835. And a decrease of unassigned fund balance of $25,455. This is actually money that they had received in the prior year from Christie Houston in a grant. Basically, it's not new money, it's what we're saying. At, at the end of the year, it wasn't completed, so it went back into, uh, our fund balance, and now they're pulling it back to use. The next thing we're looking at is the personnel changes, uh, other salaries and wages. And what this is, is to correct payroll accounts for changes in payroll calculations and changes in personnel. Uh, other salaries and wages, $4,200. Social Security, $260. Pension, $450. Employer Medicare, $60. Secretary, $1,940. Social Security, $120. Pension, $210. And Employer Medicare, $30. And that'll be a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $7,270. Then under risk management, this is actually funded for the change in pay grade of our risk manager salary. Increased revenues, transfers in, $30,370. Supervisor slash director, $1,000. Part-time personnel, $27,200. Social Security, $1,750. Pension, $10. And Employer Medicare, $410. The next item is funding for a change in pay grade of the stormwater engineer salary. And increased expenditures for assistant, $24,600. Uh, Social Security, $1,525. Pension, $2,625. Disability insurance, $50. Employer Medicare, $355. Engineering, uh, services, $40,500. And, uh, this comes up to a decrease in the unassigned fund balance of $69,655. Mr. Chairman, resolve this 14th day of March, 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second? We're on the board, members, would cast your vote?
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Our next resolution, K1B, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the solid waste fund be amended as follows. Increased expenditures, diesel fuel, $55,000. Tires and tubes, $5,000. Solid waste equipment, $151,500. And, uh, a decrease to the assigned fund balance of $211,500. This is for the Rockvale Convenience Center. Also, under the same item, under landfill, increase in expenditures for equipment and machine parts, $13,000, with a decrease of the assigned fund balance of $13,000. And this is to purchase vents to replace methane flares at the land, at the landfill. Resolve this 14th day of March, 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second? We'll be on the board, members. Cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Our next resolution is item K1C, whereas it is, there is a need to plan, design, construct, and renovate schools due to the growth in the area. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education has anticipated the future needs of the school system, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to proceed with the funding of the construction, equipping, architect fees, and other costs of the following project at the estimated cost as approved by the various county committees. Rock Springs Elementary addition, $11,050,000. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding for the above-named project in an estimated amount of $11,050,000 be authorized from a future bond issue for the constructing, equipping, architect fees, and other costs for this project. Resolve this 14th day of March, 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second? Any questions or discussion? You're on the board, cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Okay, our next resolution is item K1D, and it actually may be a little different from what you're seeing on your, uh, iPads. And the reason for this is, the resolution that I'm gonna read is actually what came out of, uh, Budget Committee. We have had a change to split these, you know, that's something we'll talk about, but I'd like to go ahead and present this as it came out of my committee. You know, we can divert from that if, at that time, if you all so desire. Resolution K1D, whereas in June of 2018, funding was approved for the acquisition of land for future schools. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education has located two sites to purchase for the future needs of the school system. And whereas one site is located on Highway 231 north of Jefferson Pike, near Walter Hill Elementary School, and is approximately 100 acres of the Andrew J. and Christie R. Matthews property at $42,500 per acre. And whereas the second site is located south of Sledge Road, east of Plainview Road, and north of Christiana Hoover Gap Road, and is approximately 150 acres of the H. Global Investment LP property at $18,000 per acre. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the purchase of the sites detailed herein for future schools be approved. Resolve this 14th day of March, 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second? Question, discussion? Commissioner Phillips? Uh, excuse me.
I'd like to make a-
Commissioner Allen?
I'd like to make a motion that we split these and vote on them separately. That we vote on the Matthews separately from the Christiana property, if we could.
Have a motion to split the vote between two properties is what came out of, of, um, Steering Committee, uh, excuse me, out of Budget Committee. They were in the same resolution, everybody understand that? So we'll be, the vote is to split. I guess it would be an amendment. It'd be an amendment to the motion, uh, made, made by Chairman P. Does everybody understand the amendment? Discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Bakken, do you recognize?
Oh, since it came out of Budget together, and now we're splitting it, I just, I need a reason why it's being split. Can anyone give me that reason?
Uh, I'd like to say something, too.
Chairman?
I mean, I, I'll yield if someone would like us to say something first, but I-
Commissioner Allen?
I do have some comments.
As best I remember it, we voted on these separately. We didn't vote on them together at Budget, so they should have been written as two.
Chairman?
Uh, the reason it was written this way, I, I didn't have anything with, actually the way it was written, but both of them were approved out of the committee. That's why it was presented as a resolution to approve both. Now, what, uh, Ms. Allen, uh, Chairman of Health and Ed, is wanting to bring out, is there's some questions about the cost. Uh, $18,000 per acre. Uh, we're paying $42,000 for the other, if these are approved. Now, uh, there's some cost of infrastructure. If you look on your iPad, there's a map there, and, and I think, uh, Mr. Greg Brooks is probably, I know he's been working on, and our county engineer's been working on this, to actually see what the cost will be to make these improvements. Uh, I've heard some rough estimates, which may jack the cost up after the road improvements, and there's some question about the water also. But, uh, maybe in the range of $45,000 per acre. What my point to bringing this out is, I, I think it's a good discussion to have. I think we need to do that. However, uh, I look at Stewart's Creek, and I don't remember what we paid per acre over there, but I guarantee you, we added roads, we added water, uh, a whole lot more than what I'm looking at on this. And if we come out at $45,000 an acre, uh, the last time that I actually was involved with us looking for property was when we were looking for a location for our Paws facility. And the cheapest thing we could find anywhere in the area that was on sewer was $85,000 an acre. Now, if we come in under $85,000 an acre, and we've got sewer there, and, uh, with these roads improvements, or even if we have to put in our own, uh, sewer system, to me, we're still getting a bargain. So I, I don't have a problem voting on them separately. I'm gonna support both of them. But I think that we're wasting our time looking at this, because if you look at the cost of these other schools and the infrastructure there, $18,000 is the deal. That's all I've got, so.
Okay, we're back on the amendment to the motion of splitting. Anybody understand? Any questions? All in favor of the amendment? Signify by saying aye. All opposed?
No.
Roll call. I'll be on the board. I'm deaf in this ear, so, uh, couldn't hear what that side was. On the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote. Madam Sec-
Eight yes, thirteen no. Amendment fails.
Amendment fails. We're back to the amendment, to the motion, original motion, as came out of Budget. Speaker Pro Tem Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, um, since we're not gonna split them, I guess we need to talk about at least one of them right now, and I, I'm assuming that's appropriate. Let me just ask a procedural question. It appears that on our iPad and on our agenda, they're separated. And someone made the decision to put them together. Is that appropriate? Is that appropriate?
This, what you see on the iPad was edited about four fifteen this afternoon, caught me by surprise when I was reading through it, and I said, well, there's a problem here, because I don't want to represent what didn't come out of my committee. So that's why it was actually changed back to the original form that I received.
Let me, let me say a couple of words is, if we could, Mr. Reed, who represents the school board, if, Mr. Reed, if you're here, could, if you could come forward. Okay, so what happened late this afternoon, it was printed in the mayor's office as being one resolution. When Ms. Taylor printed the agenda that was sent out, it was all in one, not split. Late this afternoon, two resolutions were presented to Ms. Taylor, and the request was made to change the agenda at the last minute from the school board's attorney. And she, Ms. Taylor was quite anxious on whether to do that or not, but it is split. So I'm going, Mr. Reed, explain, if you could, explain the reason for the late change in the agenda. Or Commissioner Allen.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd really like to fall on this sword, because this is, this is where it belongs. Being a member of the Planning Commission, we always hold developers to a high standard in terms of infrastructure, road development, that sort of thing. Chairman Phillips is the plan, is the chairman of that Planning Commission, which I also serve on, and we also serve on Health and Ed. Some time ago, Mr. Phillips made it very clear that any future votes tied to schools needed to come with a plan that was going to address the road network that was going to be supporting that location. So we began to have those conversations, and if you watched Health and Ed, and you watched Budget, you know that that was all part of the dialogue all along. So on Monday, I met with Mr. Brooks and with Mike Hughes, and we began the conversation about really evaluating that Christiana road network. The ultimate goal was, we wanted to know, what are we really paying for that land? We want to know what's the true cost when you put in a supporting road network. It's not the school's responsibility to evaluate supporting roads. That's our job. The problem is, we've never done that before. This is our first time to do it. We're having growing pains. We're bruising our knees a little bit and learning, and that's what you witness here right now. Mr. Hughes and Mr. Brooks took Tuesday and Wednesday, did more work on evaluating those roads. We met this morning for about two and a half hours and had every intention of reconvening. The conclusion of that first two and a half hour session was basically, we wanted to have the roads as part of the evaluation during the inspection period. The way the verbal agreement of the contract is written, it's, the way the agreement is thus far, I don't know what's actually in writing, is that we, the inspection period is valid through March thirtieth and has two thirty-day renewal periods. And so what our desire from our conversation was, was let's make sure that roads are part of that inspection period. So the problem is, the county commission has never inserted themselves into that inspection evaluation process. We've always left it up to the school board to tell us if a piece of property satisfies the inspection. So because this is a new process, and it's our first time to do this, and we're trying to do it right, and we're trying to be smart about it, we were trying to cover all the bases too fast. And so that is the ripple effect that happened here in trying to get the right words in front of you tonight. So I completely agree and completely support Mr. P. in presenting what the, what the group voted on. I do plan on trying to amend it so that roads are part of that consideration, just because I want you as a commission to know, what are you really paying for that land? I kind of likened it to this, you know, when I first saw the price, it was like seeing a dress that was on sale, and I really liked it. Now, all of a sudden, the dress isn't on sale, and the tag was wrong, and it's marked even more than I thought the dress was. So now I got to decide, did I really like the dress as much as I thought I did all along? So that's the thing, is you're just trying to figure out what's your true cost. That the school system to this point, we've all operated in silos. The school has operated independently, you know, planning and engineering has operated along with roads. And so this is our first time to try to get everybody out of the silo and into the barn so that we're all in there together. So we've made a lot of progress in these conversations this week. We still have more work to do. We're not quite there yet. That was part of the hope that we had in reconvening this afternoon, was try to iron out more details for you. But, but I am solely the one who wants to take the bullet for the confusion that's in front of you right now. But that's the backstory on how we got here.
Commissioner Phillips, you look like you want to say something.
Yes, I'm not really sure that I got an answer. Is it appropriate to change what's on our agenda and on our iPad and not discuss it separately? Is it appropriate to do that? I just need a yes or no. If the answer is yes, we'll--
I'll yield to our attorney. I'll give you my opinion. Once public notice is given, then, then it doesn't change. But I'll yield to the attorney.
I agree with that. I mean, generally speaking, you're going to--
Sorry. I said, I agree with that. Generally speaking, once the agenda is set and published for public consumption, you would follow that agenda. Now, having said that, we routinely do things from the floor that modify the agenda, where we amend things and things like that. But all things being equal, you would normally follow what's on the agenda the way it's presented. One thing I don't know, because I wasn't at the committee meeting, the Budget Committee meeting, is whether or not it was voted, they were voted on separately or not. I'm not clear about that. I don't think there's a requirement, even if hypothetically they were voted on separately, you could theoretically put those into one resolution. I don't think there's a, an obvious problem with doing that, but it does seem logically, if you have budget handled them separately, you would handle them separately here. So that's a, kind of a convoluted answer, I'm afraid, but--
Yeah, it's not a yes or no answer.
No, it isn't. No. I can't give you that.
My whole point in driving at this, Health and Ed had a lot of discussion, discussion on one of those pieces of property, and that discussion needs to be, needs to come out tonight. And we can do it under discussing both of them, and I think they were voted on separately at budget. Is that not correct? Yes, they were voted on separately at budget. So why aren't we voting them on separately tonight, since they're both separate on our agenda? And, and I'm not, I'm not as upset about this as maybe I sound, but, but there are some, there are some issues with one of those pieces of property that, that I think we need to discuss tonight. I can do it. We can do it under both of them at the same time, but, but that's the reason that I think separating them was appropriate. One of those pieces of property, even though it's a lot more expensive than the other one, is a better piece of property, and I don't have an issue with it. I really don't have an issue with the second one, the one out in Christiana. That's where that school needs to be. But we do not have the true cost of that. We're going to have to build an infrastructure to get to that, and it's going to increase the cost of that quite a bit. I'm not going to say I'm opposed to it, but I want to know that cost. And we've made that clear, at least some of us have, on Health and Ed two years ago, that we would not approve anything else unless they brought that cost to us, and they didn't do it. I'd like to suspend the rules right now and ask our road superintendent, Mr. Brooks, to come up, because he has some of those cost figures to it before we get into a real big discussion on that. It's my motion to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Brooks to make his presentation.
Have a motion and a second, suspend the rules. Mr. Brooks. All in favor of suspending the rules? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That's your green light, Mr. Brooks.
No pressure.
No, sir. I say I got your back.
Well, I don't want to dilute the topic, but I may not have an opportunity to come back up here tonight. So while I have the opportunity, I want to tell Josh what a privilege it's been to work with him while he's, while I've been in office. It's really been a pleasure, and I won't go into the whole thing about keeping things in buckets, but he's really helped us a lot, whether you're aware of how much he's done for the Highway Department or not. It's, it's been, it's been good having him. I will miss him. Wish him well. So I have a little something I want to, I want to read about, about, about this topic, but please know that, well, I kind of came into this discussion late. You know, we've been having a discussion since, since Monday, and it's a pretty big task to try to figure out exactly what road improvements need to be made and what those costs would be, given the information I have and the, and the time that I've, I've had to, to do that. So let me just read this, if you, if you would. "I've recently been brought into the conversation about, about the existing condition of the county roads around the properties being considered tonight, specifically the Christiana site. I've been asked to devise an improvement plan, and if possible, some idea of what these improvements would cost. Obviously, no one could prepare an accurate estimate in such a small window of time. I have made an attempt that, with the information I've been given, should be a reasonable starting point. I'm one hundred percent sure that modifications will have to be made as new information comes to light. Before I go into detail about this site, I would like to give you some things to consider. The information I'm giving you all tonight is not unique to this site. Although the Highway Department has only recently been brought into the conversations, we have been doing these kind of road improvements since I took office in two thousand and twelve. I'm confident that it was going on at some level before I got here, and that it will always be part of what goes on at the Highway Department. Examples of what we've done since I've been in office that pertain more specifically to school traffic, because we, I have to consider when I'm deciding what roads we're going to work on, a lot of things, volume, you know, just, all, there's a lot of considerations to be made, but some of these examples right here are specific to schools. Examples include Morton Lane, where substantial improvements took place, all made by the Highway Department, because Stewart's Creek High School was coming online, and we anticipated significant volume increases, a lot of which would be young drivers, because we're talking about a high school. In conjunction, we did, in conjunction with the work we did on Morton Lane, we did a four-point-three-mile state aid project on Rocky Fork Ample and Rocky Fork Road. And all those were because Morton Lane was, you know, it was in a pretty bad state of disrepair. So we made some line and grade improvements, because we knew there were going to be young drivers out there. Not, not just young drivers, but an increase in volume, because we're adding an entire high school. So that's, that's one. Parsons Road out on Highway two thirty-one South, we widened both lanes, we widened both lanes at the intersection of two thirty-one and Parsons Road, and then resurfaced, well, to the entrance, to the back entrance of the school, Christiana School. And then we resurfaced Parsons Road in its entirety. In two thousand and fifteen, we convinced our material supplier at that time to remain open during the winter to allow us an opportunity to build and pave the shoulders on Baker Road. After that work was completed, we then resurfaced the entire road. In conjunction, we did a very complex project on Blackman Road from Baker Road South toward Manson Pike. Both of these projects were done specifically with Brown's Chapel Elementary in mind. We recently improved and modified the intersection of Lee Road and Rocky Fork to a four-way stop condition. There are alignment problems at this intersection, and bus drivers were having a difficult time with a limited sight distance. Our employees have completed numerous improvement projects. The list continues to grow. These are just some that come to mind that we have done to increase the safety of students as well as all of the other citizens of our county. But I believe this illustrates my point. Money is already being spent for these road improvements directly related to schools, money that came directly from the Highway Department's budget. So this school, while, this school that's being proposed in Christiana, while it is, it comes with its own set of difficulties, and it may be, it may indeed be more difficult than some others we've seen, like Commissioner Phillips said, I think a lot of effort has been made in finding a good location, a location that best fits the needs of our education system as it exists right now. So on your iPad, I think you will see a map of my suggestions. I hope you will. And this is just, like I said, this is just a starting point, but this is some improvements that I feel like should be in place, based on the information I have, before the doors are opened to the first school, which I'm told is an elementary school. So all of these improvements, all of these improvements, I've tried to put a, to put a price tag on. It's difficult, because we, we have had a limited amount of time to get this done, and other responsibilities don't stop. However, with the cross-section that I'm proposing for the improvements that I have suggested on this map, the materials alone to do these improvements, all of the improvements, which involve really four separate roads, the materials alone are two-point-two million dollars. That's for the materials. I feel like that, that the timeframe involved in those improvements would, would be two years. But please understand that this is my best estimate, based on the information I have, and, you know, I'll, I'll work alongside anyone who's, who has common good in, in mind, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can, if anyone has any.
Commissioner Allen.
I want to mention that we talked about, the two million is the materials. We approximated you would need to double that number for additional construction costs. And again, that's just another guess. There's a lot of guesses in this, but that was possible acquisition of right-of-way, legal surveys, et cetera, that could accumulate to that number. And that's how we got to the speculative cost that this land could potentially run close to forty-five thousand dollars an acre under, under that equation.
Yes, ma'am, that is, that is accurate. We, we have, under that same, you know, process, we have, we have assumed, made some assumptions, that the cost to perform this work would be as much as similar to the cost of the materials. And that really, you know, you got to be careful about what you hold your hand up for, because we already have our plate full at the Highway Department, but that would be, that would be with the Highway Department actually performing the work. And I think if, moving forward, I think this conversation needs to go earlier. I do, you know, when the, this is supposed to get us through the next ten years, is my understanding, these two sites. I'm sorry?
There'll be a third.
There'll be a third, that's right, that's right. But if this thing were, if this thing were to go out for a public bid, and we were trying to hire a contractor-- and, you know, I'll work alongside anyone who has a common good in mind, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can if anyone has any.
Commissioner Allen.
Mike, I want to mention that we talked about the $2 million is the materials. We approximated you would need to double that number for additional construction costs, and again, that's just another guess. There's a lot of guesses in this, but that was possible acquisition of right-of-way, legal surveys, et cetera, that could accumulate to that number. And that's how we got to the speculative cost that this land could potentially run close to $45,000 an acre under that equation.
Yes, ma'am. That is accurate. We have, under that same, you know, process, we have assumed, made some assumptions, that the cost to perform this work would be as much as similar to the cost of the materials. And that really, you know, you've got to be careful about what you hold your hand up for because we already have our plate full at the Highway Department, but that would be with the Highway Department actually performing the work. And I think if, moving forward, I think this conversation needs to go earlier. I do, you know, when this is supposed to get us through the next 10 years, my understanding, these two sites.
There'll be a third.
I'm sorry?
There'll be a third.
There'll be a third, that's right, that's right. But if this thing were to go out for a public bid and we were trying to hire a contractor to do this, the engineering and survey and right-of-way acquisitions, that right-of-way acquisition still have to go on, that's a conversation we'll have to have, but all the information that we would have to have to put this thing out to a competitive bid process would take, in my opinion, years. And Mike may want to interject, but I've heard Commissioner Diggs and so was Mayor Kettering tell a roomful of people that, you know, it's a 12-year process to bring something from an idea to an actual usable product. And from what I, that's been my experience, that holds pretty true. But I think with some cooperation from some local people and some cooperation from different boards, then I think we could probably make this happen. But it's a lot of money to buy these materials, you know, we've got to have that discussion too at some point. Anybody?
Commissioner McAdoo. And I've got Commissioner P.
Thank you for that information. I keep hearing that you met and talked all the week or whatnot. Was it a formal meeting or just over coffee? How was that done? I'm curious about that. Was it over the phone? How many was involved? That's number one. Number two, you said that two years ago, we talked about road improvements being part of the package. Now, I know the Walter Hill area pretty good for many, many years, probably more than some sitting in here. So you're telling me that Walter Hill project is going to come to me with no road improvements?
No, sir. No, sir, I did not mean to imply that.
Why? I'm not hearing both of them tonight. That's my question. Why are we singling out just the one? Why don't you bring me the complete package of both of them, since road improvements is going to be a part of it?
I'd be happy to try to get you the information for the Walter Hill project. I think the intensity of this Christiana project is what kind of brought me in on the conversation, quite honestly. But to answer your other question, this was kind of a conversation over coffee. I had some concerns after hearing that a school was going to be placed out in the Christiana area, and I expressed those concerns with our county engineer and I think some other people and Ms. Rhonda, and I just, yeah, it was very informal. And it's a very short amount of time to get that much information together because we're not talking about specifics. We're talking about what my opinion is of what roads need to be improved. And what you need to understand is I have a limited amount of information that I'm moving forward with. I have a map with a location of a school, so the area that that school will draw from, it's still pretty gray to me, so I'm just doing the best I can with the information I have to work with. I'd be happy to try to address the concerns with the school at the Walter Hill site. I think there are some traffic, no, I know there are going to be traffic issues. I don't think it. I know for sure there are going to be traffic issues with that site as well. I have heard, not officially, but I have heard that they are trying to handle some of the storage of that traffic on-site as opposed to letting it stack up on the highway out there, so that gave me some comfort, but I haven't seen the plan, so I can't tell you for sure that that's the case.
I have Commissioner P. and then Commissioner Gurley. Commissioner P.
Mike, you've been kind of put under the gun here, but a quick question on what I've got up there. Are any of those improvements going to happen whether a school goes there or not?
Not to that level.
Okay, but there will be some.
We are currently making the improvements. We didn't know that a school was coming, but we're out there making improvements right now just by coincidence. I know that's difficult to imagine, but we worked on, we had crews working on Hoover's Gap last winter, improving it, and it's amazing how well it turned out. And that brought on a conversation about Plainview Road. You see Plainview Road there runs north and south, just to the west of the site we're talking about. We're doing, you know, this week, we've done some work out there that's made a huge difference because those roads are narrow, you know, they're narrow, and there's a significant amount of traffic out there that, like there is everywhere, you know, roads that used to see 10 cars a day or, you know, they just don't exist anymore.
Right. You said that materials to make these improvements, in a quick estimate, nobody's holding, or I'm not going to hold you to it, it was $2.5 million?
2.2.
2.2, okay. I think I used 2.5, but that would add about 16,000 per acre of the 150 acres. That'd make it 34,000 acre. Then you said, we've got to do it if we do it ourselves.
The work has to happen, yeah, that's just the material.
Right, that was just material, and if we do it ourselves, that's another 16 of that, which is right in the range of 50,000 per acre. So I'm glad we're having this discussion because we need to know what it's going to cost us to build these schools. But what I see, and just like Commissioner McAdoo pointed out, yes, there's going to be some improvements on that road over there off 231 North. There'd have to be. There're going to be at least some turn lanes, I would think, if nothing else. But do you think of anywhere in Rutherford County, if we dropped a school along there, that you wouldn't have to make road improvements?
No, sir, I cannot, and I have been thinking about that. And, you know, I pointed that out at the Budget and Finance Meeting the other night, that there's, this site, neither one of these sites are unique to that problem, traffic problems and road problems, infrastructure problems, that they're not unique to that, and I think you're going to have those anywhere you go. I mean, you know, I go back to the little thing I read you, you know, these roads that we've improved were, a lot of the decision to improve those roads was made because they serve schools, so they're not unique.
Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, my question is kind of along the last question Commissioner P. asked. As I indicated during Health and Ed, I'm pretty familiar with that area because of having to travel out in there over the previous years. The Health and Ed Committee looked at two other parcels out in there before this one was brought to us. My question gets back, and I think you've already answered it, but are there, if we dropped a school anywhere out in that area, is there any place we could drop it without having to do exactly the same thing we're doing here?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not either.
Not that I'm aware of.
Other questions? Commissioner Koush.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. Couple of questions, and before I, I want to talk about the water main, so don't let me forget that, but what you've just heard is the crux of the problem. There is a lack of communication between the school board, the planning committee, the road superintendent about planning. School board's been working on this property for two years. Most of us in planning are not aware of it. It was a shock to Superintendent Brooks. He cannot plan his year by, oh my gosh, they're going to build a school. He cannot plan his year by, oh shucks, I got to do $4 million worth of roadwork to get to a school. That is pitiful to plan that way. So we have got to close that gap of broken communication. That's what Rhonda was hinting at in her discussion. We have got to fix that. That's why we kind of put our foot down, I say we in the collaborative we, that hold on. Yeah, we've got the cost of raw land, but now we could be spending $5, $10 million extra for infrastructure. You know, in my opinion, the school is no more than a big developer trying to build 500 homes. They expect us to drop everything we're doing and build a $5 million road out there. Now, enough said off on that. I have heard multiple stories, rumors, I won't even call them stories. I've heard multiple rumors about the water line out to that area for Christiana, that 10-inch will do for the school, but they'd like to have 16-inch diameter, but that's going to cost an extra $800,000. Has there been any new discovery in the last couple of days from CUD, or is there anybody at CUD that you've chatted that can give us any information about, would the 10-inch line that's out there be sufficient for that school, or is there another $800,000 that the county's going to have to pay to upsize the water line?
I'm afraid that that is beyond my level of expertise. I can't, I could only speculate. I do not know. I do not know about the water line. I can tell you that it appears that, you know, we're all getting on the same page finally. I mean, I've heard Commissioner Phillips say for years that we have to plan for these kind of things, you know, he's been adamant about that many times. So I think moving forward, maybe the line of communication is improving, and it needs to, it should have already, but I can't speak about the water line, I just do not know. I do not know.
Commissioner P.
I'm not wanting to shorten any questions anybody's got for Mr. Brooks, but I'd also like to suspend the rules to allow Gary Clardy to address some of the questions that are coming up too after we finish with that. I'll make that in a motion or whatever I need to do.
I think the rules are already suspended. I'll yield for Gary Clardy to come on up, and in the meantime, I do have a question. Commissioner Johnson, you recognized?
I'd like to have a comment. Okay, you're looking maybe at $2.2 million for the infrastructure, okay? Well, okay, 2.2 for the material, all right? You know there's going to be some infrastructure that needs to be done in the Walter Hill.
Yes, sir.
All right, so you're looking at maybe the same amount of money plus to do that out there. I mean, if you want to play the game of what if? What if it comes up here that $50,000, $55,000 an acre is what it winds up out there? You're just shooting yourself in the foot.
Commissioner Pearson.
You give us a figure of 2.2 million for materials only on the road, correct?
Yes, sir.
But will there have to be any land acquired to make these widensings?
Yes, sir.
So we don't have to be bought, done, and kicked to the ground?
Yes, sir.
And that's from the center of the road, there's no right-of-way out there, is there?
The road book does show right-of-way on all of the roads in question, you know, we do have a right-of-way. A lot of that right-of-way is considered to be prescriptive right-of-way, as Mr. Koush is very burst on. But in many cases, it would be from the center line of the road. However, when a road has been used for a public, for public good for a certain number of years, I believe that is 20, I'm getting off in the weeds here, then the Highway Department does have the power, I guess you would say, to keep that road maintained and keep the roadside ditches working, that kind of thing, so. I guess in some cases, yes, in some cases, it would be from the right-of-way as it exists in the road book.
I sat on the Budget Committee also, and we voted these the other night singly. I don't understand myself why it's been put together. I had several questions about it. I'm not against the school being in Christiana, not one bit at all, but I'm very concerned about the total cost. If we stand up here and spend money and not know the final cost of either site, whether it's the Walter Hill site or the Christiana site, we need a closer figure of what it's going to cost our taxpayers. Now, I know we're probably going to vote on it tonight, and I won't oppose the Christiana site at all. I did on budget because there was questions that I had that wasn't answered. Got close, but close doesn't work when you're dealing with dollars. Thank you.
Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. While you're up here, let me commend you on the job that you've done in the relatively short period of time putting this together. I said that my interest is in the cost of that, and you've come up with a figure that almost doubles the cost of that project, almost, maybe not quite, but it'll take it up to $35,000 an acre, which to me, it's still okay, but what if it would have been 15 million bucks instead of 2.2 million bucks? That's my point, and my only point is that I wanted to know that figure. Now that I've got that figure, I can make an intelligent decision. And part of that motion, I think, that we vote on tonight has to relate to that infrastructure being in place before those schools are open. We can't open those schools and have
Inadequate.
... question out there that you can't get kids in and out of there safely. And what we talked about at Health and Ed was the safety aspect of it more than anything else. And if that's our number-one objective at schools, and it appears to be the way things are going in this world, then we have to consider that. We on planning have dealt with that Epps Mill intersection numerous times over the last several years, and a lot of residents come out and not necessarily are objecting to the building that's being proposed, but the traffic that it's going to create on that road, that's the point. Walter Hill is going to be on a state road that can handle the traffic, no matter what it costs to improve that road. This road will not handle that traffic without those improvements. And that was my whole point, and it has been for the longest time, is that we can't go on building unless we improve the infrastructure we rebuild. It's part of our planning process. A developer cannot build unless a traffic study is done, and as a result of that traffic study, road improvements are made, whether it's by the county or by the builder or a combination of both. That's what needs to happen right now. And I apologize not only to our mayor, but this commission, if I seemed a little edgy a while ago, but I am really passionate about this. We have to look forward. We have to look forward as to what this county's going to look like 20 years from now. We can't look at, this is what we want to do right now. We have to be able to transport people from point A to point B. We must do that. He knows it. Our road superintendent knows it, and if we need an additional $2.2 million to build this project, it needs to be part of the cost. It doesn't need to come out of his budget. It needs to be part of this project cost, and I think that has to be part of our motion tonight. Once again, thank you, I appreciate all your hard work, and I'm not opposed to this. I'm not. I said that in Health and Ed, and I'm saying it again tonight. That area is where our new schools need to be. My only objection was, I want to know what it's going to cost us. If you would have come back with 15 million bucks, I'm sure some of us would have at least thought twice, maybe three times about it. And I know that sizable pieces of land are hard to come by in this county and are going to be extremely hard to come by, but we're going to have to pay a price, we're going to have to, to transport kids, and your job's going to be tougher, and I want to make sure that our school board gives us all the information that we need to make those decisions. The reason I voted no at Health and Ed was because I did not have that information, and I've been telling them for two years, I'm not going to do it unless you give me that information. I've got it tonight, and I'm able to make that decision, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Commissioner P., you have questions for?
Please understand that the improvements that are being suggested here do not are just that, they're a suggestion. They're not, it's not, you know, hard facts, but it is a suggestion, but, and it's my best effort in three days. However, I agree with you completely that the road improvements for any school, this school, Walter Hill School, are critical. Critical improvements have to happen before we Critical improvements have to happen before we populate the school. I, I do believe that. I also believe that it, it's my responsibility and all of our responsibilities to make sure that we are giving our young people coming up and our citizens of this county a sustainable product. And that's what, that's what this improvements that I'm suggesting, hopefully they are, they're sustainable, that moving forward, they're going to give us a level of service and a life that, that would be acceptable, something we can sustain moving forward. We ask that of our, you know, all of our subdivision regulations for our roads are something that we feel like if, if we get what we're, what we're requiring, we can sustain it moving forward. So anything?
Commissioner P.
I'd just like to hear from Mr. Clardy. Do you have any regrets in the position that they brought up?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clardy, you're recognized. Is everybody through with Mr. E? No, we're, we're still on, we're still in recess. We still have a motion. We'll come back in out of recess, but there's some questions here. Mr. P, any questions from the school board?
Let me just first start by saying that Mr. Brooks has done an excellent job, and Mr. Kush is exactly right. This all, everyone needs to work together as a team. And I applaud Rhonda and Greg and Mr. Phillips for this. Now, I did deliver a traffic study, as I was asked to do, to the Health and Ed Committee. We met with Mr. Brooks probably a year and a half ago at one time. But a while back, I, I'm going to try to recall these numbers. A while back, I was looking over some site cost and different things. Well, if you take the $9 million that is recommended for that site out there, including the elementary, the middle, and the high school, and also you consider this is going to be, the building is going to be taking place over anywhere from 12 to 15 years, then this is spread out over time. But if you take the $18,000 for the property, you take the $50,000 for the internal workings and some turn lanes, that comes up at $68,000 to $70,000 an acre for that property and the site work. Now, at times through the years, we've had sites with the improvements as much as $120,000 an acre. So if you take that amount, they've been from 80 to 120, depending on the time they were built and those kinds of things. So if you take the difference in that 120 and the 70 or 60, whatever, that's $60,000 more an acre. And if you take that time, 150, that's another $9 million. Well, I think, frankly, I think he's a little low on his material cost. I think that for what he's looking at out there, if in fact you're going to do all those roads, you're probably looking at $7 million. And you spread that over 12 years. So it's doable, and I'm going to recommend to Mr. Spurlock and the board that they cooperate with the planning commission, with Mr. Brooks, with whoever else needs to be involved to try to work this thing out. As the mayor said, we are almost, I'm almost through here with my work of 15 years. And I hate to hand this problem off, but I'm very excited that this is being addressed. Now, there's another issue with this money. The money doesn't need to come through the school system because if it comes through the school system, we have to share it with the city. So it needs to come through Mr. Brooks's department. And it needs to go along with school borrowing. So if we go out there and if this is approved tonight, the money's approved for the site, we want to get busy. We've got portables out there now in four schools that are 20, we've got 20 portables out there. We're already pushing this school off another year. That means this coming year on those four schools, we got to do something because they're growing like crazy. They're as much as 125% full or 25% over capacity with, with the sticks and bricks of the building and the support stuff. So I would say that with Mr. Lee, with Mr. Spurlock, with the financial person from the departments and those types of things, the dialogue is open now. It is, we're ready to go. We just all need to get our heads together and do what's right for the children and the taxpayers of Rutherford County. So at this time...
Commissioner Gurley.
Yes. I live closer than anyone to a three-school complex. You can't get much closer than my house. Someone asked a minute ago, what Stewart's Creek cost? 12 an acre, I know. I was the executor of my mom's estate. She got a great deal on that. We didn't try to gouge the county because my mom was a school teacher. We realize the value of education. Is there a few traffic, are there a few traffic issues? Yes, there was major improvements to Morton. And I'm sure those cost quite a bit more and added up if you added the major improvement to Morton. You know, relocation of power lines, I lost some trees. You know, the relocation of water line, upgrade of water line, the extension from Smyrna Sewer onto the property. All of those things are infrastructure cost, the cost, if you wanted to get back to putting that to an acre cost. And, but the traffic pattern, like I said, we're, we're a full-blown, maxed-out, three-school complex. I live there. I look at it every day, and it's not as bad as some people want to make out. Now, could we improve it? Yes. Poplarwood has never had anything done to it. It's still the 20-foot road that it was when we sold the farm. So yeah, there's some improvement. Could we open Foxland and funnel traffic through? Yeah, and improve things. So there's still some improvements that could be done, but it works, and the traffic is really not that bad. It doesn't stack up real bad. Yes, there will have to be improvements out on 231. 231 may be a state highway, but it's still only two lanes. So you've got a pipe one way and a pipe the other way. So you're going to have to add turn lanes. You're going to have to do something with infrastructure and turn. So it's not a, it's not going to cost any more. Yeah, is it a better road than some of these? I've driven around all of these roads out there. Mr. Brooks done a great job on Miller and some others out there of improving them as he has on, and some of the ones around my area. But I really think we should be considering, are we going to buy this property? We looked at two more parcels of property out there that weren't any better. Same condition roads, probably poorer property in terms of building on. So where are you going to go? That's my question. Let's get on with it.
Well, you know, I hope that, you know, we've made a lot of progress in the last 15 or 20 years with, we haven't bought any portables since 2007 maybe. And we've managed to do that through the building. I think we've got 144 portable classrooms right now, and we've managed to stay ahead of the curb a little bit so that we can get something ready, put students in it, and then move those portables to another school during the summer. So I would just challenge this commission to be the commission that helps resolve and solve this problem, and don't be the one that lets the school system backslide into where we're buying portables every year and those things. I know it's expensive. Mr. Brooks, I know he's got a tight budget. Y'all need to give him more money so he can get more work done. He's standing over there right now, willing to work. He's worked hard this week getting all his stuff together. So, you know, I want to commend him. And, and I know the school board is going to welcome him as part of the team down there. And Mr. Spurlock will make sure of that. So if y'all have any specific questions, I'll be glad to answer them. We're still negotiating with Consolidated. We had a conversation with them that we would have an upgrade from a 10-inch pipe to a 16-inch pipe, and we would just have to pay the difference. Perhaps we need to look at that in a more cost-effective way and put it in our school bid and let our general contractors bid it and let Consolidated inspect it, and maybe we'll get a bargain.
Other questions?
I feel the conversation winding down, and so just while I have you at the podium, I'm going to take a moment to just publicly thank you, Mr. Clardy. This is my ninth year on Health and Ed, my fifth year as chairman, and he took someone who knew nothing about building schools and made her incredibly comfortable with making decisions and casting multimillion-dollar votes with great confidence. And so I just want to say thank you so much for being my teacher.
You're very welcome. Y'all have been good to me. I appreciate it. I'm glad to see Mr. Blair over here. I know we've got a very serious advocate in him, and I hope he doesn't have to put his karate to use.
Any other questions?
If I could just add one thing. It gave me some concern when Mr. Clardy said that he thought my estimate was low, and because this is what he does. I mean, he, he's done this for years and years. So I'm afraid I didn't make myself completely clear in the fact that what I'm proposing, what you're seeing on the screen right here, what I'm proposing is the first phase. That's, that's me putting a radius around the school site and saying we have to at least do this day one. And as, as more schools come online, that radius will have to expand. However, it, as you all know, you know, development will, will follow a three-school campus. So I think that there will be an opportunity to recover some of the, some of those extended upgrades from some, possibly from some development that was, is inevitable. So that's all I got.
Looking at, looking at your map, before we get a school out there or not, we've got some roads that needs to be straightened up because vans was hard to make some of those curves when we went out there in the van.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
That's something we're going to have to do.
Yes, ma'am, I agree. Some of this, some of these improvements are with or without a school, and some of them are underway as we speak, so.
Any other questions for these two? Seeing none, we'll come back into session out of recess. Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioner P, we are on 8-1-D. There is a motion before us. The motion before us is as recommended, it came from, from the Budget Committee. Everybody remember the motion?
May I, may I speak for a moment?
Yes, Commissioner.
One thing I want to point out, democracy or our republic's not always pretty, but people watching at home, and I think the people here know, Commissioner Phillips, Commissioner Allen, myself, we're all on the same page here. You know, one of my members of the Budget Committee that I chair asked why this was split. And I, I want to tell you, standing here, I will never bring anything forward to you that didn't come out of my committee, to the best of my knowledge, just the way you did it. Now, the motion that I gave you, gave you a motion with the two combined together, Steve. Now, if you look on your iPad, they're separate. The first one asked basically for up or down, yes or no vote on the first property, which is on 231. If you look at that second motion, that motion basically asked you to defer for 30 days so we can have the discussion we just had. So it was not something that came out of our committee, and that's why I refused to put it up like that. And I, I had a discussion beforehand about how to handle this, and I thought the best way to do it is exactly what we did, give the motion where they're together, and then we can amend it if we need to. So I hope that straightens up any questions any of the commissioners had. But like I said, look at your iPad and read that next motion, and you'll see why I balked at it.
Madam Clerk, just for clarification for the record, could you reread the motion to where everybody has an understanding of what the motion is? Madam Clerk?
Yes, the motion is that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the purchase of these sites detailed herein for future schools be approved.
Sites meaning plural. Everybody understand that? Okay, we're on the board, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Chairman.
21 yes. Motion passes.
Okay, then to add to our confusion there, that next motion, we have no need to look at, that next resolution rather, and we're going to go to the item that on my list here is called K-1-E. And I'll read the resolution. Whereas there is a need to plan, design, construct, and renovate schools due to the, due to the growth in the area, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education has anticipated the future needs of the school system, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to proceed with the funding of the multi-school campus site, work, and elementary school design architect fees for the project located south of Sledge Road, east of Plainview Road, and north of Christiana Hoover's Gap Road at the estimated cost of $9,155,000, as approved by the various county committees. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding for the above detailed project in an estimated amount of $9,155,000 be authorized from a future bond issue with the site work and architect fees for the project resolved this 14th day of March 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Now a second. Questions? Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Phillips.
Part of this design process, let's get back to the roads again, and roads have to be, in my mind, upfront. Is, is any of this considered part of that process? I just need to ask whether anyone on the Budget Committee knows that, or anyone on the Health and Ed Committee knows that? And if so, does it, just like I think Mr. McCarty was saying earlier, does it need to be separate money from this project? I'm just trying my best to get a clarification in my mind as to where
the new infrastructure is going to fit in, just designing the food and giving a photo book or whatever.
Are that process without knowing where the infrastructure's coming from?
Jeff, I don't feel qualified to answer that. However, I think Mr. Clardy can if, if y'all will allow another suspension and let him speak again.
Have a motion, suspend the rules, let Mr. McCarty come up in a second. All in favor, signify, say aye. All opposed, motion carries.
That, within that budget, that does the utilities. We've got a power that's got to come in there. I priced that out today. It's in a $180,000 range, and that includes the three transformers for each building. It also includes the internal road that go out to It also includes the internal road that go out to Plainview, where Christiana hits Plainview and Hoover's Gap, there at that little church. And it also goes out to Hoover's Gap, those roads. It also provides some funds in there for turn lanes coming off of Hoover's Gap and Plainview at that area up there. As was described in the engineering report that we got on the traffic study, they had a traffic count done as they phased it in. Now, I don't, the biggest thing on the traffic study was that there needs to be at some point a major thoroughfare put in up from 24 back down that way some way. That doesn't include that. I think that at some point, when the time comes, that that needs to be addressed, but it doesn't need to be addressed on the front end as we're trying to get to elementary. And there's a lot of people that do drop off, a lot of children ride the bus also, but the problem won't be as great until you get up into the middle school and then the high school. So it does provide for some of that. So if you're going to work on any other areas of the road outside of the immediate area, you'll need some fund for that.
Elementary first?
Yes, sir.
What's your expected opening date?
That would be 2021. We had to bump it up a year from 2020.
If I'm not mistaken, what I heard Superintendent Brooks say a minute ago, it's going to take two years, at least two years, for us to build a school. You're planning on opening it in two years, and we still don't have the funds available or the plan to improve that road out there. I know I'm riding a dead horse, and I apologize for that, but I do not see the plan in place to improve those schools. I don't see it, and I want to see it. Maybe I'm the only one, but what I hear from you is that we're going to build that school. We're not considering what it's going to take for us to improve that road out there. I don't know how many of you have been on Epps Road the last four or five years, but try to go out there during rush hour. Try to do that. And we're planning on putting a three-school campus out there right now, and I'm getting back to, I just voted to buy this property, and I think it's appropriate, but I still don't see the plan, the infrastructure plan. The water is still not there. I'm thinking that we're planning on approving the start of this building process, and we still don't have the utilities improved, we still don't have a road plan, and that's where he needs to come in.
That's correct.
That needs to be part of this financing process. I don't know whether it needs to be done tonight, and it probably doesn't, but it has to be done soon if it's going to take two years for us to build a road and you're going to open a school.
I would charge Mr. Furlock, Mr. Lee, and Mr. Brooks to get their head together as soon as possible and bring forth a plan that is cooperative plan, and what they need is funding once they determine what are needed on those roads. But we need to move now with the site design so that we can get a jump on this going into the spring and a dry part of the year, so that we can get that site developed. The climate in the last three years has made everything very expensive because of the rain. I mean, time is money, and in many cases, it's tripling the length of time that it takes to get the site work done with the grading and those types of things. So that does need to move ahead, and I think that, you know, I have a comfort level that Mr. Lee, Mr. Furlock, even Mr. Phillips, you could be involved in those conversations and in those meetings and add your expertise, since you have the expertise with the planning commission for 25 years, and give them your input and your experience and help us come to a solution much quicker.
Commissioner Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Part of our conversation at Budget the other night with Chairman Allen's leadership and Superintendent Brooks' spontaneous involvement, we had some discussion about taking this conversation with the momentum we have to Public Works. I've spoken to our chairman, Chairman Koosh, and we anticipate taking this topic to Public Works next month. We've got to get some verbiage to it, but I think the collaboration has begun, and Public Works needs to participate. We're the funding mechanism that controls the Highway Department or has some influence on Highway Department. So I concur, and Commissioner Phillips, we are, with your leadership and tenacity, we are proceeding with putting some plans together.
Seeing none, we'll come out of recess, back into session. Thank you, sir. No more questions. Back to you, Chairman P.
I'm ready for a vote when y'all are.
Okay, everybody understand the vote? On the board, cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
We're still in reports by standing committees. Health and Education Committee, no report. Now I call Chairman Allen McAdoo for the Property Management Committee. Commissioner, are you recognized?
The Property Management Committee has four resolutions tonight, and I will read them in the order as they are on the agenda. Resolution, whereas Rutherford County has acquired a 2,093-square-foot house at 4640 Florence Road through the purchase of property on Singer Road, and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County that the county declare said house to be surplus and proceed to sell and remove the same pursuant to bids following the county policy. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows. The 2,093-square-foot house located at 4640 Florence Road located on the county-owned property on Singer Road be and the same as hereby declared surplus property to be sold to the highest bidder via sealed bid process and removed as soon as possible from said Singer Road property. Two, the county mayor and other required officials be and the same hereby are authorized to execute any instrument of convenience, of conveyance to consummate said sale to the appropriate time, at the appropriate time, resolved this 14th day of March 2019. I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Have a second. All in favor of the motion, signify, saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Second resolution, whereas to historical documents, the state legislated, passed legislation on July 24, 1820, that accepted the donation of land by Golden Thompson for the establishment of Milton, Tennessee. Subsequently, most of the land was sold to Harwood Morgan, and the remainder known as the Milton Ballpark was said to be gifted to Milton in 1950, but there are no records to that effect. And whereas the state of Tennessee is willing to quitclaim the property commonly known as the Milton Ballpark to Rutherford County as a gift to be used solely as open green space for public use, and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens and residents of Rutherford County that the property commonly known as the Milton Ballpark be accepted to the terms and conditions set forth below. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Rutherford County hereby accepts to quitclaim deed from the state of Tennessee, the property commonly known as the Milton Ballpark, tax map 0638, Group A, partial 003. Be it further resolved, Rutherford County shall pay to the state of Tennessee the minimum real estate management fee for this transaction in the amount of $500 and provide a meets and bound description of that said property resolved this 14th day of March 2019. I so move.
Have a motion, a second. Questions, discussion? We're on the board. Cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Also, I think Commissioner Pearson said he would loan the county the $500 to
Commissioner Pearson, defend yourself.
As hard as I've worked on this, if that's what it takes, you've got it. We have worked on it for over a year.
I know.
Thank you.
Third resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the old Rockville store at the Rockville Convenience Center be and hereby is donated to the Rockville Historical Society, contingent upon evidence that the Rockville Historical Society is organized and in a manner appropriate to hold our used property. Entry into an appropriate lease deed or indemnity agreements to same and documents that will account for limitations of use and our reverseatory language if use or upkeep is not managed as deemed appropriate by Rutherford County. Resolved this 14th day of March 2019. I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Second, questions, discussion? Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this property, is this store anchored to the property, or is it something that's movable?
I believe it sits on a foundation, I would assume.
Because if it's anchored to the property, it's part of the real estate.
That's correct.
But how are we, I guess I'm trying to understand how we're giving them the store if it's attached to our land.
It's movable, but we discussed that in the meeting, and the store in which the land that it sits on, plus two parking spaces, and
That's not in the resolution.
Be given, but apparently all that was brought in the resolution was the store. So I guess we may need an amendment to that effect.
An amendment to that resolution, if the desire is for the commission to keep the ground underneath the store, would be appropriate.
I mean, the way it's worded, it says that they're just getting the store, but I didn't know if it was actually part of the ground, or if it's something that could be picked up and taken away.
Good question, and you're correct, it's not in the resolution saying that, so as I said, it would be appropriate if that's the desire of the commission to keep the ground underneath it. If it burns up and blows away, the county commission still desires to keep the property, right?
Correct. That seems to be the intent of it, so.
Correct. I think that was the intent, but it's probably not in the resolution, so I think it'd be appropriate.
I would make the motion to that effect.
Have a motion, the motion to the fact of that the property
Add that amendment, correct.
Underneath the store
Belongs to the county.
Still belongs to the county of Rutherford.
Correct.
And a second. Any further discussion? Questions? Commissioner Allen.
I have a question. What does that do, Josh, to liability in terms of, like, if we're going to give them two parking places, are we giving them that land, or are we leasing them those parking places? Because we're keeping the land under the building, it just all started to feel messy, so.
Yeah, it may, it could be a little bit messy. So I looked back at the minutes of the meeting, and I'm not sure exactly all of that was clarified, frankly, coming out of the committee. So the way this resolution is written, I think, makes it, you'll see the word contingent there. So I think the intent of the committee, as I understood it, was a gift of some sort, just meaning this society would have the building, but as a gift, meaning they wouldn't pay for it. But all of the details of that were not really laid out. So in the resolution, this would leave open the ability, I think, of the county to get with the society and figure that out. So if you're not granting the land, you're not doing a deed, so it's probably going to be some kind of lease, or it might be even called a gift agreement, but I think it needs to include indemnity language, which is mentioned here in the resolution, in case somebody falls down in the building and sues the county because we still own the real estate under it. Same thing with parking spaces. I think whatever sort of arrangement is made with the Rockville Historical Society needs to include all of that, all of that liability shifting. And I don't know what the Rockville Historical Society is, and, you know, is it organized in such a way that it can
My understanding.
Hold property and so forth. I just don't know one way or the other. This would just allow that to be determined.
We do have members, the president, the Rockville Historical Society is here. I do believe that they're a 501(c)(3), and probably could, I'm seeing an affirmative head shake, and probably end that motion on this. You could ask to be indemnified and require that a million-dollar liability policy be carried, naming Rutherford County as additional name insured. Those are always ways to protect the county.
I just had one subsequent thought, and that was property tax. If we're keeping the property, but they have the building, property tax is usually charged on the improvement, and so again, just as you're hammering out the details, and maybe we just give the mayor the authority to work through these details, that may be the cleanest thing to do, but I just want to make sure that on the, that all those kinds of details have been discussed.
Well, one thought about the tax is, I don't know how they would use the property, but it could be exempt from tax since, assuming they're a 501(c)(3) and assuming they utilize the property for historical use, they may have a tax exemption too, so that may not be a problem. But again, I don't know, this doesn't say anything about how they would use the property. Neither did the minutes, so I don't know the answer to that.
I have an amendment and a second to the motion. Does everybody understand that in discussion? Any other questions? We're on the amendment to the motion. All in favor, signify, saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Back on the original motion. Commissioner Phillips.
I guess the more conversation we had, the more confused I get about this whole deal. I think everyone wants to do it, but there seems to be a lot of things we're trying to work out on the floor, and I would whole lots rather see it worked out in committee than on the floor, and I would make an amendment to that motion that we send it back to property management for them to work out those details and come back with a complete plan for that presentation next month.
Commissioner Harris, and then Commissioner Stevens.
All of those details could be worked out
Oh, a second.
All of those details could be worked out when the lease arrangement is made.
That could.
But we don't need to send it back to property management again. The mayor or the property, whoever's making the lease and approving the lease can require the insurance and can put the rules in place or whatnot for parking at that time, and then it would come back to us then, but I don't see a reason to send this back to property management, bring it back here next month, and send it back to them to do a lease. them to do a lease, and send it back to us, let's just get this thing done and move on.
I think Commissioner Stevens is correct, because as our attorney said, the word contingent, so that can be worked on lease agreement or in the agreement before we hand the property over, those details could be worked out.
Yes, I do understand the resolution as read to mean that the donation is contingent upon all of those matters being addressed in writing.
I'll remove that motion to amend if Mr. Harris will remove the second.
Okay. Motion has been removed and a second. We're back on the main motion. Does everybody understand the main motion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signal five, saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Rockville.
Congratulations, Commissioner Reed. Because we worked on that one a long time. Fourth resolution. Whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens and residents of Rutherford County that the Rockville Convenience Center be upgraded. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county proceed to build a new Rockville Convenience Center across the road from the current Rockville Convenience Center around the old store. Resolve this fourteenth day of March 2019, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signal five, saying aye. All opposed. Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
And that concludes property management four resolutions tonight.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. No report from Public Safety this month. Public Works and Planning Committee. Commissioner Kusch.
Well, good evening, everybody. I have two resolutions, and I will just, on your iPad, you have the, what would I call this? The guts of what these resolutions are about, I can give you the highlights, but let me read resolution, let's see, the number is not on this hard copy, let's see what we have here. I want to start with the intergovernmental agreement, and let's see if this has a number. K5A, thank you, Commissioner Don. I don't have that quickly available on the iPad. All right. This is, whereas the attached intergovernmental agreement between Rutherford County and the city of Murfreesboro for utilities installation along Asbury Road, a copy of said intergovernmental agreement being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length as it is set forth verbatim, is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the intergovernmental agreement as presented, resolved this fourteenth day of March 2019. Now, the backstory is, there is a subdivision that the city is building that is near the...
Let's get that motion probably before us, if you could.
All right. I hated for them to vote on something they really didn't know the backstory to, so Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We've got a motion and a second.
Okay, for discussion. In your iPads, you will see the couple of pages, what this is about. The city has a subdivision that they need to access county property to get sewer and water in. So this is what this intergovernmental relationship is. The city is going to, we're going to grant them to put a sanitary sewer on, in our right of way and under our county road. They are going to take full responsibility for inspection, maintenance, construction inspection, putting the road back together, redoing any ditchways, and then in perpetuity, they're going to be responsible for that line. So that's what this agreement is for. They need to cross our property, so we're going to grant them the access to do that. So any questions on that part? All right. Yes.
Commissioner Rother.
I think it's worth saying to look at the exhibit attached to that, because it's an agreement, but it also, we have as a county, zero liability for anything. Everything is between the city and that developer as far as liability. So we're granting something, but at the same time, there's language in there that totally removes Rutherford County from any liability.
That is correct. Thank you for bringing that up. So should be a slam dunk. Any more questions?
Any questions? Discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify, saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
All right. Okay. I also have a resolution from Mac Nolan regarding a recycling pickup, and I will read the resolution, and then there is also an exhibit on your iPad that goes into further explanation, and I'll give you the highlights of that after I read the resolution. Whereas the attached agreement for recycling pickup, a copy of said agreement being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length as if set forth verbatim, is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County to be used in the dual-stream recycling program. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the agreement for recycling pickup is hereby approved for use in the dual-stream recycling program. Resolve this fourteenth day of March 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor, signify, saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Can't believe there are no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now I'll call on Commissioner Stevens for the Steering Legislative Governmental Report. Commissioner Stevens, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On your iPad, you'll find for our first agenda, which is a resolution in opposition to school vouchers and education savings accounts. This resolution's several pages, and I will be presenting an amendment that has a lot of the same language in it. So without objection, Mr. Chairman, if we can just make a motion to put on the floor the resolution that was passed by the steering committee, I would make that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion, questions?
And I would like to offer my amendment to this, Mr. Chairman. So whereas the public education system of Tennessee is best managed by Tennesseans for which it serves, and whereas the Rutherford County and city of Murfreesboro school systems have been recognized as exemplary school systems in the state of Tennessee, and whereas the Rutherford County school system is the fourth-largest school system in the state of Tennessee, and together with the city of Murfreesboro school system, the two school systems serve in excess of 59,000 students, and whereas voucher programs could hurt public education by taking dollars that would otherwise go into the public school system and giving those dollars to private interests, and whereas every public school system in Tennessee has costs to maintain a free public school system, and any funds taken from the public school system for private vouchers are not likely to be fully replaced by the state, and whereas school vouchers could lead to tax increases, as local governments may need to increase property taxes to pay for the lost revenue from the state going to private voucher programs, and whereas a loss of tax dollars will reduce funding available for academic programs and teaching staff at public schools, and whereas education savings accounts are the equivalent of vouchers and divert funds from the public school system and private schools and private benefit, and whereas funds diverted to education savings accounts could result in higher taxes to fund Tennessee's public school system, and whereas diverting public funds to education savings accounts results in less accountability over those funds to ensure that education dollars are spent on academically successful programs and schools, and whereas the sense of the Rutherford County Commission is that public schools in Rutherford County, Tennessee, would best be served by being exempted from any state voucher and/or education savings account legislation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to oppose legislation establishing school vouchers and education savings accounts in Rutherford County, Tennessee, and be it further resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners request the Rutherford County Legislative Delegation to exempt Rutherford County from any legislation pending that creates vouchers and/or education savings accounts, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to each member of the Rutherford County Legislative Delegation. And Mr. Chairman, I would offer that as an amendment to the language that was presented in the steering committee's recommendation.
Have a motion and a second on the amendment.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, the reason that I propose this is that it's a little bit more toned down, I think that it's going to be more likely to be received by our legislators than the one that was passed by the steering committee. I did not vote for the package that came out of the steering committee, I felt it was very antagonistic, and it was very sharply worded about lobbyists, and I just felt like it was probably going to do us more harm than good. This one's kind of toned down and just says we don't want the voucher system here in our county because we have great schools and we don't want to take away from that. My personal position was that, I'm not sure I'm willing to tell the people in Memphis or Nashville or wherever else it has a failing school system how they should fix their problems. I think we, this county commission should focus on our great schools and just try to maintain the integrity of our great school system without trying to tell everybody else what to do with theirs.
Commissioner Gurley.
Yes. I consider myself a strong supporter of public schools. I voted yes on, I think, every request that the school system has asked since I've been a commissioner. But I went to the school board meeting with the legislative delegation here a while back, and out of that hour session, 45 minutes was spent on school vouchers. There were three or four other items on that agenda. The last two, I thought the agenda should have been in reverse order, the last two were teacher retention and teacher pay. If you can't retain your teachers, you've got a problem. If you don't pay them, you're not going to retain them. So I thought, in my mind, an undue emphasis was placed on the opposition to school vouchers, which I really, really don't see as a big issue in Rutherford County. We have a great school system. My kids went through the school system. They turned out okay, I think. The, but, you know, we're just spending, the board, I don't know how much of our tax dollars has been spent on lobbying against this. I know that if we look at the school budget, and I'll be looking at that here shortly, there's funds in there for association involvement, et cetera, and those dollar figures are pretty substantial. I just think, the other thing I noted from that meeting was, there was, as you just mentioned, Commissioner, quite a bit of antagonism. In fact, a couple of delegates, delegation walked out, and I don't really think you accomplished much of anything that way. If you can't sit down and have a good dialogue, the pros and cons, and I see there's pros and cons to school vouchers. I don't think, I think for some people in some systems, if the school system doesn't do its job, that's when these come into play. And I just saw an amendment that the administration was proposed today that puts some pretty good limits on that as far as involvement. So I don't really see it as an issue. I think this resolution kind of points out to how much, I mean, I haven't seen a resolution this big, I don't know when, this many words to say, I'm opposed vouchers. You could just get it down to a couple of sentences. And I think the school board, in my opinion, and like I said, I've been really supportive and will continue to be supportive of education in this county, because I think we have a great system, and we have great teachers, we have great administrators, as long as we can keep those teachers, pay those teachers well, train those teachers well, our students will do well. And I just think we're spending an awful lot of time and energy opposing something that's really not an issue. I would hope that, in my lifetime at least, we never get to that point where parents are considering this. You know, in the last several years, I've known parents that are homeschool kids, putting them back into public school, because we're so good, and we should be proud of that, and we should continue to do what we did tonight, and that's fund, approve funding to keep our schools ahead of the curve. But I really think a lot of the board's energy really needs to be spent in dealing with those issues that are real, like teacher retention, teacher pay, and I just took that from, I attended that meeting, and I was surprised that that much energy was put into, and that much time was put into that, so I'll be voting no on it.
Other questions? Commissioner P.
Well, I have to say, I've been a supporter of schools, just like Mr. Gurley, however, I have a difference of opinion on this question about these charter schools. I voted for Governor Lee, I supported him, and I'll say that proudly. I was aware that he was looking favorably toward these charter-type schools, I don't like that. But the reason this is going out there is to let our delegation know that we want control over the education kept here locally with our elected officials, with our school boards making those decisions, not an appointed board, appointed by the governor that will oversee whether anywhere in the state gets a charter school or not. And the monies that are going to the public schools, which we dearly need, get diverted to, in my book, you know, a private agency. That's why I support sending a resolution this long, as a matter of fact, it could be probably a couple hundred pages, if I thought they'd sit down and read it and it makes sense to them, it wouldn't. And you're right, we don't need to be controversial with these folks, they represent us, but they also are listening to people that are telling them something different from what we're telling them. We need a little better debate with some of our constituents or their constituents and say, hey, this is why. You know, some of you guys that are supporting the charter schools, I can see it where you have a failing school system, but where you have exemplary schools like we have in Rutherford County and Murfreesboro, you know, we're going to lose out if we start sending our money to other charter schools. So that's why I support this resolution going through to our state representatives, and why I think it's important we send it to them. You know, whether that's controversial to some of them or not, I'm sorry, but they need to hear from us.
I've got Superintendent Spurlock has gotten my attention and would like to come up and speak. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow the superintendent to speak? Motion and a second. All in favor, signal five, saying aye. All opposed. Superintendent Spurlock, you're recognized.
Is everyone having fun yet? I'll be very brief. There's some, clear up some things. First of all, I didn't, I wasn't part of crafting the language. I did attend the meeting, and I saw you there, and I would have to disagree on just a few things. The ones that had, one state legislator had to leave because of another meeting, but I do think we probably perhaps could have gotten to some more important issues, but the issue that exists is currently in Governor Lee's proposal, it's $7,300 per kid. That's more money than we get per student in our state BP, guys. So which means when you lose that kind of money, I mean, the state's either going to have to replace that, or we're going to be looking back at the local to do that. Now I do agree also that, you know, that homeschool, you're right, but you know, homeschool's included in the educational savings account. Now if you'll look back at some of your states, I would strongly encourage you to Google Arizona and vouchers and educational savings accounts, and this is one of the issues that Director Schools Mike Looney talked about in Williamson County. County. Once you open up the door for funding going to individual parents for them to use as they see fit, you will open up the door for private schools of students who have never darkened the doors of public education. It's case law. So that's my point. And I'll be very briefly, and I understand it, you know, personally, I think we've probably, like the old saying, we're a dollar late and two days short or something because this wave is coming to us and we're just going to have to address it the best way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spurlock. We'll come back in session. We're back on the motion as amended. We have an amendment to the motion that we need to vote on. Commissioner Johnson? Question's been called. It's not debatable. And a second. All in favor of the motion, excuse me, all in favor of the amendment to the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Back on the motion as amended. Any discussion? Any questions? Yes, sir. Commissioner Phillips?
Well, you're with the whole process as a lot of folks are, especially people who are daily involved with the school board. But out of the Steering Committee, was there a motion that came out of the Steering Committee? Was there a motion to yes or no? I just thought I remember the Steering Committee not moving on this. Was there a motion that come out of the Steering Committee?
There was and it passed forward to, and it's the one that's on your iPad. And it's much longer than the amendment we just read.
Okay, so the Steering Committee came with a positive
It did.
Recommendation. Very good. And I remember the voucher program, and I know that the savings and the voucher are two different things, but isn't the voucher program intended for, to allow students to transfer schools if their school is failing? And would that have any impact on Rutherford County schools, any whatsoever? So we would be voting on something that would have no impact on Rutherford County? And I'm just wondering if it would have a negative impact on some of the counties that may not have as good a school system as we do and would maybe benefit by a voucher program? Is this just targeting Rutherford County, including Murfreesboro schools?
The amendment we just passed specifically says that we want our legislators to oppose anything that affects Rutherford County.
Only.
If they want to do something in Memphis or downtown Nashville or wherever, we're just asking if they exempt us from that. And we want to do the same thing that Williamson County did, which was specifically put in there, but it does not apply to this county.
But we want to exempt from it.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Other discussion or questions? On the motion as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Commissioner?
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda for steering is one about our application process to be appointed to a board or a committee. Whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens and residents of Rutherford County to update the application for appointment to boards and committees, providing applications are due one week before the Steering Committee meeting and setting a policy, but nominations will not be permitted from the commission floor to fill a vacancy unless the application was filed within the required time. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Rutherford County, Tennessee, application for appointment attached here to is Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein as if set forth verbatim. Be and hereby is deemed the official application to be used for all vacancies on Rutherford County boards or committees. Resolve this 14th day of March, 2019. And Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion.
Have a motion. Second and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner P.
You know, just to say quickly, I'm opposed. And the reason I'm opposed, I think that's limiting, you know, what a commissioner can do as far as being a commissioner. If I happen to feel, if I feel that there's a better candidate out there that was overlooked, I want to be able to nominate them from the floor. Had I felt there was a better candidate than Mr. Blair tonight, I would have nominated him to the floor. We could have done that tonight. With this, we can't. Now, I agree with you 100%. When I was Chairman of Steering, I had in place basically, or we had in place basically a rule, if you didn't have your application in at the deadline, then we didn't see your application. And that kind of slipped away later, but you know, I applaud that part of it. If you pull the part out where the commissioners can't bring someone up from the floor, I'll support your motion, but other than that, I can't support it. Thank you.
Well, there was going to be an amendment quite to that effect, so after a discussion.
Other discussion? Commissioner Rother?
I probably could have leaned over and asked this question. I was reading something while he was talking. The ability for the commission to appoint from the floor, that still exists if that person had turned in an application?
Correct. Mm-hmm. That is correct.
Discussion? Commissioner Gurley?
This only applies to boards and commissions, not elected offices like filling commissioner and so on tonight.
That's what the resolution says.
Any other questions?
I would like to offer an amendment, Mr. Chairman, and just add a clause after it says filed within the required time and change that to a semicolon. However, the Board of Commissioners may waive this rule by two-thirds vote.
Everybody heard that? This form of motions or second? Got a second? All in favor of the amendment? Discussion on that, on the amendment? Yes, sir.
If someone wanted to make a nomination from the floor, how would that work?
You'd have to ask the commissioners to suspend the rules, like the same thing we do if somebody wants to come up here and speak to us that's not a member. We just, the person would make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the requirement that the person being nominated didn't have to file an application.
Other questions or discussion? All in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye. Excuse me? You okay? It passes. It passes. Sorry, I didn't recognize you. It's my fault. Amendment passes back to the motion. Any questions on the motion as amended?
I'm sorry, just one more. I wanted to make sure that we're not violating any of our codes, any of our regulations, any of our private acts by doing this. Do we have, you've probably already done that, Robert. I should have known better than even ask that. But I just want to make sure that we're not. If we're by code, by our private act, allowed to do that, would this amend that private act and does it need to be included in that? I just wanted to make sure that we're not violating any.
Commissioner McCray?
Well, to answer the last thing you said first, the answer's no. If there, if there is a private act in some situation that provides for a method for appointing board members, then the private act is going to control and you can't amend the private act by county resolution. But to the extent there are boards or commissions that are otherwise controlled by the county commission, so there's no private act, then I think you have the freedom to create a policy about how you make those selections. And I understand this resolution to be part and parcel of that policy. So unfortunately, it sort of means in every instance, you've got to determine, is this person being appointed pursuant to a private act or pursuant to general law or pursuant to some previous county resolution, to make sure that you're doing it correctly.
Commissioner P.
Okay, I'd like to amend this motion to take away the part that says that the commission has to have a two-thirds vote to be able to nominate someone from the floor.
Not sure we can unamend something we just amended. Somebody on the prevailing side would have to.
Yeah, I do think in talking to counsel, it would have to be someone on the prevailing side to reconsider the previous vote.
I happened to have voted for the previous motion. So I did. You didn't recognize any no's on that last vote, did you?
I didn't. Well, you're on the prevailing side, so.
I do not want to have to ask to be able to nominate somebody from the floor, period.
Is there a second to the motion of someone on the prevailing side to reconsider the previous vote? Is there a second? Got a second? Does everybody understand the motion? Commissioner?
If you do this, you're limiting the power that you've got as a commissioner to be able to make decisions and to influence other people here on the board. You know, that's the bottom line. And I don't want what power or influence that we have to make decisions like that, I don't want to give that up as a commissioner. That's why I'm saying this. And I don't think any of you want to either. I mean, it's common sense that people need to get their applications in so we can look at them. You know, but I'll give you, for instance, and most of you saw this happen, we had a lady, great person, she was voted in by steering to fill a position. We got up here and the director of that particular division said, "This person's not qualified." You know, so what can we do but nominate somebody from the floor? Now, we might get two-thirds, might not, but I don't want to have to fight to do that. I do not want to diminish your authority, your influence or your power here as a commissioner. That's why.
Commissioner Gooch?
Robert, so the amendment and the motion is passed is that if someone has an application before steering and wasn't nominated from steering, and then someone at that point from the floor could nominate that person without a two-thirds vote. Your two-thirds vote is just if somebody has not an application. Is that correct?
Correct. That's a brand-new person.
Brand-new person. So I think, Commissioner P, that as long as they got that initial application in, then you can nominate that person from the floor without having a two-thirds vote. In the case that you cited, then if there was no one else that turned in an application, it could always just send back to steering for reposting, I suppose.
Commissioner Rother?
Years ago, 2010, I turned an application in for the BZA. And I came to the steering meeting, stood up and talked for a couple minutes and sat down and the votes took place. So I went through that process and people still do that today. I don't think the intent behind doing this was to take power away from the commission as much as it was, you know, we have four people that turned in applications, we listen to them, we vote them down to one and nominate that to this floor, only to have somebody that didn't turn an application in, they came out of left field and the commission appoints them. What does that say to the four people that did turn in their application, came to the steering meeting, got up and said what they wanted to say? I have heard this statement way too many times in Rutherford County and I've heard it since I've been a commissioner in the whole six months or however long it's been. The county's going to do what the county wants to do. And that upsets me when I hear people say that because you don't run the county and we do, but who do we answer to? Who's our bosses? Those people out there. And to hear one of those folks say that the county's going to do whatever the county wants to do, it may have that appearance, but I hate hearing that. So when we were talking about this, and that's why we added the part about the commission could appoint another person that had presented an application, if we don't do that and the commission has the power just to choose the guy on the back row back there, well, it's kind of funny because Steve's standing back there on the back row. I didn't realize that. That went on purpose, Steve. But if the county, if the commission can do that, I just think, I'm going to hear another comment about, or somebody's going to say to somebody else, "Say what happened? You can fill out an application and the county," they're going to do exactly what they want to do. And they're going to say that their mind was made up before that meeting ever started. And I just think that's a problem. I hope we can come to, I like the two-thirds where, you know, the commissioners can make a decision or the majority of them, but I assure you, it never crossed my mind in that meeting to take power away from the commissioners because I am one. And I think Robert and I have a better relationship today that we can disagree and still smile and get along.
Other discussion? Commissioner Gooch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Rother, for that, those points. Which leads me to this point. The whole application process is for steering to have the ability to vet people, right? First and foremost. I don't want somebody, anybody, to have the ability to nominate somebody from the floor that we haven't vetted, that we haven't had the opportunity to go through the application, call their former employer, find out, is this person good or bad? Are they a good employee? Have they had any drug or alcohol issues? Have anything, you know, we don't have that opportunity if you nominate somebody from the floor. It could be Phil Dodd's cousin that he's nominating. We don't know. And we got to do, we can't just nominate some yahoo up here to be part of some committee. We've got to go and vet people, check on their history. That's why they fill out an application. That's why they list their former employers. That's why it says, "Do you mind if we check with your former employer?" We're going to do that. So I'm sorry, Commissioner P, but this is a different world. We have got to be responsible and pick good people for these committees because this is a growing county and we need good, responsible folks on these committees and we want to be able to vet those folks out.
Other comments or discussion? Commissioner P.
I'd like to get out of here tonight, too. I'm going to make another quick observation is, first of all, I'm not going to bring somebody or nominate someone from the floor that I don't implicitly trust. And, you know, everybody may not know him or her, but I guarantee if I nominate somebody from the floor or attempt to, depending on how this vote goes here, it would be somebody you'd be proud to have represent us. And you would also have the choice at that time of saying, "Well, no, Mr. P, we're not going to vote for this person. We're going to vote for who came out of steering or whatever." So you've got that. That's not taking it away from what steering's able to do, but if this person or whoever nominates them from the floor can show good reason, this person should be on the committee. I think that's what we're taking away from you as a commissioner by letting this go
Any further questions or discussion? Any further questions or discussion? We have a motion and a second from the prevailing side, from Commissioner P. It's an amendment. Motion to amend to strike the previous amendment, and it'll take a two-thirds vote.
Want to vote no, if you don't want to put this amendment on there.
Right. Does everybody understand the motion? On the amendment. Madam Clerk?
We're voting on the prevailing side to strike the previous two-thirds vote.
Let's go on the board. Everybody cast their vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, they may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
Seven yes, fourteen no, amendment fails.
Amendment fails. We're back on the motion as previously amended. Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo and I were here talking, the steering committee can make a recommendation without a two-thirds vote, a simple majority, and I'd make an amendment to this motion instead of two-thirds, that it would be a simple majority instead of a two-thirds majority, just like the steering committee would come out of the steering committee.
Have a motion and a second, and everybody understand that? Drop it from a two-thirds to a simple majority? All in favor? Oh, any discussion on that? Any further discussion? Commissioner Harris. It's been requested to go on the board. Everybody cast their vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not clear what I'm voting on. Is this with an application or without?
I'm sorry?
Is this with an application or without? I'm not clear on the simple majority.
Without.
This is without. I thought we just...
No, this is with.
The other one was with the application, this one is...
They don't have to vote to change anything if they turn an application in. If they applied by the deadline, if they applied by the deadline, they can be nominated from the floor without anybody voting on anything. This is somebody that shows up at the last minute and says, "Hey, I want to be on this committee."
You're, I think the motion that we were voting on, someone could be nominated if they turned in an application, but it had to be a two-thirds vote.
That is not correct. If they turn their application by the deadline, anybody can nominate them for any reason without having to have a vote. If they show up at the last minute, and they want to be nominated by a commissioner and didn't turn the application in, that's where we had put the two-thirds requirement on there, to suspend the rules and have them be nominated. If you want to change that to one-half or majority, that's fine, but this only applies to people that don't turn an application in on time.
Think about that.
I think we're making this a little bit more complicated than it needs to be.
And I may be getting really confused, but the two-thirds supermajority kind of bothers me when it comes to nominating someone, and even with someone that hasn't turned in an application, I think a simple majority should rule. It rules that way in our committee process, and I think it should rule that way on the floor, so even though they haven't turned in an application, I still think it should be a simple majority.
Commissioner Gammann.
Actually, I've got this thing working. I think everybody's pretty tired, I've missed my birthday party.
You're out of order.
So I think, I think here the simplest thing, I think, I agree that if a commissioner comes up on the floor and he wants to nominate somebody, I'm all for that, because I've been there. I've also had a position taken away like that before, too. So, but here's the thing, I think if somebody comes up, and I agree that if they are brought up on the floor, they should bring an application with them that's vetted, that is reviewed, if they get approved to be accepted, then have some process of vetting that person and say, "Okay, they passed, they passed the mark, they passed the smell test," and then they're in. But if they don't pass it, we're back again. At least that door opens, that may sound silly, but there you go.
So you want two-thirds or a simple majority?
Simple, I believe simple.
I think that's kind of where we're at. We're back on, we're back on the amendment. Madam Clerk?
A simple majority vote.
This is a simple majority vote.
Only for people that have turned in an application.
No, this is for people that have not turned in an application. If somebody turned an application in, they can be nominated by any commissioner. If they didn't turn an application in, the motion is to have a simple majority vote to allow the rules to be suspended for that person to be nominated.
All right, we're on the board as requested by Commissioner Harris. Everybody cast their vote.
Anyone that did not vote? Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote. Madam Clerk.
Thirteen yes, eight no, motion passes.
Okay, so we're back to the original motion as amended. Everyone understand that? Superintendent Spurlock, are we having fun yet? Commissioner Piercy.
Aren't we making this a little harder than we need to? It missed for nomination, not appointment, and even if they were nominated, you could still vote against them based on your thoughts? I think we need to simplify this up and vote, will you say?
Any other discussion?
I call for the question, Mr. Chairman.
Question's been called and seconded. All in favor of calling for the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries back on the motion as amended.
Oh, yes.
Any questions? All in favor of the motion as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next, Commissioner.
We've got one more, this one should be easy. So this is a resolution to approve the updated public records policy, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Rutherford County, Tennessee amended and restated public records policy for Rutherford County, Tennessee, attached here to as Exhibit One and incorporated herein as if set forth verbatim, be and hereby is deemed the official amended and restated public records policy for Rutherford County, Tennessee. Resolve this fourteenth day of March, 2019, and Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Stevens.
Before we adjourn, members, I'd like to take a point of privilege and recognize someone who has given a lot of their time and dedication to this county. This is Mr. McCray's last meeting with us in his official capacity as our attorney. Josh, we thank you for your years of dedication to Rutherford County. I know that you're going to be in a better place where you don't have to, you can look down on us now from over at NHC and from the tower, you won't have to go to bed worrying about different issues that come before us, but I know that you have served us because you love the county and you've done an excellent job in representing us. We thank you for your service, any comments? Anybody like parting words for Mr. McCray?
Yeah, let me just say briefly, I know everybody's tired, so I'll be pretty brief here.
Maybe want to leave that little book, we might need it.
Yeah, Robert's Rules, there you go. Good luck with that. Now, let me just, I just want to say thank you. You all have shown a tremendous amount of support for me over the last couple of years. It's been an honor to serve as county attorney during this time. It's been interesting work, it has been challenging at times, and, but I've enjoyed it. I've gotten to know many of you pretty well, and I will, I'm thankful for those friendships. You have lots of great people working in this county that I've gotten to know well. Several of them are sitting right back there, I see Greg Brooks and Mike Hughes, and Steve Sandlin and Sonia Stevenson, and Doug Demossi was here, and these are people that I've worked with and have worked with, day in and day out here for the last many years, really, but as county attorney for two and a half years, and they are great people, great public servants, and they do a really good job, and I won't forget you either, Lisa, I didn't see you out there, so I'm sorry. And of course, Lisa, who wins all the awards, and so those relationships I value, and I will miss seeing those people every day. So we, I think next month, I expect someone from my, someone else from my office will be sitting here. Nick Christensen is slated to take this seat, I think, beginning next month, he's sitting out there, and he, along with others in my office, Jeff Reed, who was up, he stood here eloquently earlier but didn't say anything, and Roger Hudson have been doing county work for many, many years, longer than me, they know a whole lot about the county, I'm leaving you in very good hands. So thank you again, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Josh. Does anyone have any other business to come before us before we adjourn?
Well, the rookie...
Commissioner, you are recognized, Commissioner Blair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to thank you commissioners for giving me this opportunity to serve this county community, and I really look forward to the work that we'll do together over the next months and years, and again, grateful for this opportunity, and just, I am honored. Again, thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner P? Ham breakfast?
We can't leave without talking about ham breakfast. This Saturday, the sixteenth, from six to ten, there is a ham breakfast and pancake breakfast at the Kitchell Volunteer Fire Department, love to have you there. If you come, I promise I won't talk about committee appointments.
Any other announcements? Commissioner Reed.
Before you get out of here, I want everybody to show out, show up, I start to say, "Show out," but show up at MTSU tomorrow afternoon at 4:30. The Eagleville High School basketball team, the boys, will be in the semifinals over there. They did an excellent job today, we'd like to see everybody else out there tomorrow. Come over there and cheer on that team for their opportunity to go on to the championship.
Well, we wish our Eagleville boys lots of luck and bring home a trophy. I'm sure they can find room out there in a trophy case somewhere. Anything else? Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we're losing Mr. McCray, steering committee's going to be charged with our way forward, and we have a special call meeting Monday night at 5:30 that'll be held here. If you have questions for Mr. McCray or Mr. Christensen, or just in general, that you'd like to have asked, this would be a great opportunity for you to come and do that, and if you can't make it, you can relay those to me, and I'll be sure that your questions get answered. This is going to be a very consequential decision for us, so we need all the input and thought that we can get put into it, so we'd love to have that.
Any other announcements? Commissioner Rother?
This weekend, Leanna will not be having a turkey shoot or a ham breakfast, so don't show up, because we're not going to do that. Real reason I stood up is Commissioner P and I, we weren't, we didn't go there together, but we saw each other there, went to a teacher recognition assembly or banquet, whatever you want to call it, at the Embassy Suites, where they named the teachers of the year. My wife and I got married twenty, almost twenty-three years ago, and at the age of, she was in her twenties, at the age of around thirty-five, she went back to school and got her master's degree and started teaching. She didn't work for many years prior to that, and I didn't realize until she started teaching that she had been different the time that she wasn't working. I didn't notice that until she started working again. And I really, you know, we talk about the good schools, and a lot of, I hear that from a lot of people, but I get to see it kind of from a different perspective, because my wife several times will come home, she leaves about 6:30, 6:40, and there's times she's not at home till 5:00 or 5:30, and then I go in the bedroom, and she's got paper scattered all over the bed, and she's, you know, and it's, it's not a, you know, get there at eight and leave at three kind of job, and that's it. I've seen her there on the weekends, along with the rest of her fifth grade team, and tonight was the first time I've been to one of those banquets, and publicly, I would, I've already said this to her, but publicly, I would like to congratulate my wife for being Teacher of the Year from Cedar Grove Elementary in Smyrna. I would like to give that same enthusiastic applause to not just every teacher that got that award tonight, but every teacher in this county, because I know for a fact, based on my experience, that I otherwise would not have known, Mr. Spurlock said this tonight, I believe, it's a calling. They certainly don't do it for the money. Some do, you know, that's going to happen, but I know a lot of teachers in that school, I know a lot of other teachers, Mr. Estes, his daughter Valerie, they didn't do it for the money, they did it because it's in them, and that's part of who they are, and that's their calling in life. And so I just, I just want to make that point and publicly congratulate all those men and women who got Teacher of the Year, and I, you know, just daily, I applaud anybody that won't step in there and be a teacher, so that's it.
One good word for that is amen. I said that's one good word for that is amen. Any other business to come before this committee? Seeing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.